Good evening, everyone. If you wouldn't mind, we're going to rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to move off the agenda for a minute. I wanted to take an opportunity this evening to just refresh the community that this past Thursday, we were awarded a $3 million infrastructure grant under the Mass Works program. Much appreciated. A lot of the work was done with folks here in this building, but also through our legislative support members who unfortunately couldn't make it because they were tied up in session, but they were gracious enough to come this evening to give us an opportunity to thank them in person. If you wouldn't mind, come on up, sit right up here, right in front of that mic would be ideal. I'm going to turn it over to the town administrator, say a few words, give the board members an opportunity, and give you an opportunity as well. Mr. Gobert.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Senator, Representative, good evening. We're glad to have you here this evening. We understand that you were required to attend to other business, state business, on Thursday afternoon and unable to join us for the governor's announcement of $3 million in Mass Works grant funding for water infrastructure here in North Reading. If I could, I just want to read from the comments that I had prepared at the event, which if you haven't seen the video or online, but I'm just going to read from them because I think they express a sentiment that I felt. The partnership that we touched upon during the course of the presentation and the solutions that were delivered to North Reading didn't find their way here on their own. We're fortunate to have legislative representation that not only holds leadership responsibilities in the House and the Senate, but who are dedicated to advocating on behalf of North Reading day in and day out. Be it in the legislative process, finding common ground when there were differences of opinion between the town and the state, while pushing to ensure our interests were addressed. You both kept your eye on the ball for over three years during the sale partnership process and for, in the case of Representative Jones, for more than 20 years dating back to his tenure on the Board of Select when it came to the very property.
My infancy.
Did you say your infancy?
My infancy.
Well said. And in the case of Senator Tarr, for really getting the ball going on this current process, the sale partnership process in 2014. We're very grateful and we thank you both for your advocacy and we were very pleased to receive the grant award from the state on Thursday. So, thank you.
The governor wasn't so kind to you two guys in your absence.
I just wanted to sort of work a little bit off that because in that presentation to the governor, and we did try to emphasize our theme for the evening was partnership. And we went through a lot of that in very quick moment, in a very quick few minutes. We talked about the MSBA with the schools, being able to get almost 50% of the funding to build that school. Again, couldn't have got that done without both your support. The money that we've gotten from MAPC and DHCD, which has helped us to sort of lay out a plan for the future. Now we have this infrastructure work that we can get done, get the pipes in the ground that give us the resources we need to build growth, build the future for the town economic development. The Mass DOT, we're going to finally put sidewalks in on Hable Street, which we've talked about, as you know, for a long time. Again, just support. The Community Compact, which was new to all of us, but you helped guide us through that. And today, we actually, from just one example of it we used in front of the governor was the money that we got to study transportation. Now we have a ring and ride program. We get our seniors and our disabled vets to and for medical appointments, which is fantastic for this community. And then obviously, D-CAM, starting in your office, Senator, your office, Senator Tarr. I'll never forget that first day. From there, we just ran. And then from the day we acquired the property, two years later, with four days left in the sale partnership model for an extra 5%, we got that closed in the cash in our bank account. And then here we are now with the Mass Works grant. And again, couldn't get that ball over the line, over the goal line without you. And we just really wanted to take this opportunity to thank you. And thank you for taking time out of your schedule to be here. And I'd just leave it over if you have any comments, or then we can come into the board.
All right. So, first of all, I want to say both Brad and I received a selfie that was taken by the town administrator with the absent, with sort of the void of where Brad and I were supposed to be. So, we both appreciated that very much and responded in kind.
Appreciate your time.
But I just want to say, and I think Brad feels very much the same way, we appreciate the partnership we have with you. We very much enjoy the dialogue and the productivity and the opportunity for us to explore opportunities that will be beneficial to people in town. And the JT Berry site is certainly emblematic of that. And I think we all know, we've traveled a very long road with this piece of property, but it's strategically very important. It has a lot of opportunity for the town. And by working together, we've been able to capture that opportunity, and I think in a very robust and beneficial way. And so, it's certainly been a partnership all the way around. And I enjoy the partnership that I have with Brad. And we certainly are able to work as a team in the legislature. And we also very much appreciate the opportunity we have to work with you every step of the way. Because we all know that a lot of the things that you were referencing might have not had an easy road.
No.
And the fact that we're able to work together to have persistence, to overcome obstacles, to navigate what can be a complicated situation, certainly is very, very gratifying and I think very productive. So, let me just say thank you to all of you for the thanks and for the partnership that we have, because it certainly is a productive thing and it's also something that we very much appreciate.
I would echo what Bruce said and kind of thinking about it and going back and looking some of it. This has gone on for about a quarter century, going back to just the fields that the town got back in '92, '93. And then obviously, Lincoln Development. And to look at the revenues generated for the town in one iteration or another, never mind the tax benefits, that that's been, you know, a quarter, quarter century of, I think, you know, some peaks and valleys, but ultimately, an exceptionally good end result. And enough of one that obviously the governor brought it up today, with the Senate President and the Speaker and others talking about how he loved the partnership and the result in North Reading. And talked about the housing, the program, and there was a lot of interest in trying to talk about replicating that in other areas. So, I think you may be getting some inquiries along the way about how that all worked out.
Yep. I did offer to the governor and also to the commissioner from D-CAM that we would be more than happy to make the time to go out to other communities all over the Commonwealth and try to just give them our story.
We told them you'd be willing to do it for a fee, because we want to see if we can generate some.
Of course.
We told them that we'd be willing to license the process.
Exactly.
Take a percentage of it.
No, but if we can do that, we owe it to them. I think we owe them a debt of gratitude. At least, we should be willing to do that. So, anyone else want to? Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, gentlemen, thank you for your hard work. I know Brad, you started this when you were seven years old and you're still working on it. And to also people on this board and the people at Town Hall, I feel like personally, being relatively new to the board, I just showed up for the touchdown dance. But you guys, everybody worked on this so hard for so many years, I just want to give a thank you to everybody who was involved in this, because it's a great opportunity for the town and a lot of people put a lot of hard work into this.
And it's definitely, obviously, these are success stories in large part, obviously, because of all of your involvement in bringing it to everybody here. And I'm like Andy, I haven't, I haven't been around for the major portion of this, but I'm very glad to be here and be a part of it. And thank you for everything here. You are why this is a success story for us. So, thank you.
Mr. Misery.
I want to thank the both of you for all of your effort and the support of the town in North Reading through all these years. When we've ever had an issue, you've come back and we appeal to you, came back with an answer, and you've done it with enthusiasm and, you know, just a general great, what I want to say is, you know, a great relationship between your work and your support, not only of this board, but the whole town of North Reading. We all owe you an appreciation.
Mr. O'Leary.
Just, it's something we said for longevity, I guess, right?
We agree.
You know, we agree.
We appreciate the fact.
Brad and I served together on the board here many years ago.
Can we get that in the minutes, that they actually agreed?
We actually agree. We agree on a lot of this.
We appreciate the fact you brought us cookies tonight, Steve.
I did. The administrator didn't want to leave them at home. But no, truly, you know, nothing happens quickly. Or if it does, it's an anomaly when it comes to state government, local government, you know, things evolve. And boards and legislators have to evolve with changing times and changing marketplaces and all the rest. And JT Berry is a prime example of, you know, what we were looking for originally, first of all, just a seat at the table, you know, that we sort of, I've been, again, Mr. Misery's been around for a little while too now, you know, we had the JT Berry Reuse Committee and all the rest. But again, the fact that we got the fields from the state was a wonderful thing. We had a zone one way, the state came back to us and said, you know, you've got to consider something else. You know, Brad, Bruce, you're talking about 40R, 40S, which again, not only brought revenues to the town with the development, but also additional revenues, which we didn't know about or anticipate even getting, which was a windfall and terrific. And we thought that was a great deal at the time, and it was. But you look at what just occurred, you know, with the Polty Properties and this partnership that we have now with the state, with the state's program, again, they've evolved. They finally recognized that they had just so many pieces of property to liquidate. Unless they get the local communities involved to take it head-on, give them an opportunity to do so, and willing to share in the benefits of it, you see what can happen. And that just came about in the last five years maybe, you know, the concept, but this brought it to fruition and was terrific. But the role that you two have played, again, over the last couple of decades, truly, has been phenomenal. Again, you haven't, you haven't lost sight, you kept focused, you kept us focused, you kept us informed as to what types of programs were available, grants that may be available to us, opportunities we should be looking at. And honestly, in the last, you know, three to five years, we have availed ourselves of more opportunities than I've seen in a long time. And again, I think there were more opportunities out there, just a question of the community buying into the program, willing to rezone property, willing to adapt. And it's, you know, this board plays a major role as far as helping to formulate public opinion, but you two gentlemen have done a fantastic job of keeping us well-informed to take advantage of the opportunities that are there. And I'm just grateful that this board and previous, last week, previous boards have decided to take your advice. And you've done a terrific job for us, grateful for it, and we expect more. Right? That was yesterday. That was yesterday. What have you done for us lately? You've done a great job and truly grateful.
So, if it's okay, we could take a quick picture. Have a, you don't have the certificate with you, do you?
I do.
You didn't cash it yet? What's going on? You lost the whole weekend? You want the answers? What's going on?
Someone told us this isn't a check, by the way.
I don't know.
Steve, I thought I saw you not attending America, trying to get the big check. What do you mean, there's no check?
Kate, can you go on the side? Sounds like a profit. One, two, three.
Congratulations. Everyone was talking 3.6.
3.7.
He said it, we got to get it.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to do that. We got to celebrate the victories when we get them, because they're so few and far between. So, thank you. We're going to get back to the agenda, and what I'm going to ask the board, if we could move the minutes to the end, and I'll go to public comment, if anyone's here for public comment. And if not, we're going to go right into the budget hearings.
Oh, now you're going to spend it, right?
And that way there gets us somewhat back on track. Because we're going to pass over the change of manager for Speedway this evening, okay? Yeah, they didn't get their fingerprinting completed, right Jane? Is that tomorrow?
What's that?
The fingerprinting for Speedway?
Yes.
So, we're going to pass over that, move the minutes to the end, and we're going to go right into the budget hearings. And I believe the first one up is HR. Do you need a microphone, Bob? We can move the microphone over.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, through you.
Yes, please.
As we've done in each of the previous budget hearings, I'm going to ask the finance director to review on a per departmental budget basis, what recommend, what difference there might be, if any, between the departmental requests and my recommendations. You know, I'm just going to kind of note this as a casual observation, as we've gone through the budget process, this now being the third hearing that we're at. We certainly have done things differently this year with regard to seeing more expansive departmental requests and considering those requests. The finance director and I have spoken, and for me, hindsight, you know, of course, it's always 20-20 looking at this, but I think, you know, what may be playing out is a process where it appears that there may not be an alignment of the priorities between the recommendations and what's being discussed here. So, yeah, my sentiment is that it may have been more advantageous to postpone making any recommendations in the budget until after the budget process. So, I'd ask that people kind of look at this process through that venue, so that the folks at this table know that we're taking the feedback, finance committee as well, we're taking the feedback, we're listening to it. You know, again, like anything, we're going to continually improve the process, but, and I really have valued the feedback, but I don't want those who might be following along to think that somehow there's, you know, a difference of priorities, because I don't really believe that there is. I think it's just that the way the process has played out, we're discussing those priorities at this table in an ongoing basis.
But I think that's a great approach for next year, when we go into this process.
So, with that, I'll ask the finance director, if she could comment.
To start this evening, we're starting with the Human Resources Department. If you recall, last year, Human Resources was a sub-department of the town administrator's budget request. We now have Human Resources as a standalone department. And the town administrator's request matches the departmental request for Human Resources. I'll turn it over to the Human Resources Director.
On behalf of Allison and myself, I'd like to thank the town administrator and the board for their support over the last year and taking our first sort of tentative steps as a newly independent department. A lot of the focus over the last year was based upon health insurance, and we're looking eagerly towards this year in developing some additional training programs, both within the department to address the ever-changing laws relating to employment matters, but also potentially to bring in outside training resources in terms of better serving the public. And that's reflected in our budget this year, as well as sort of the little things that are also important in terms of postage and office supplies and things that were formerly under the town administrator's budget that are now part of ours. Would I be to answer any questions you might have?
Well, I will tell you, the list of accomplishments in the time that you've arrived is pretty amazing. It fills up over a page and, you know, you read through, and I was reading some, through some of them. It's been, well, you've been drinking from a fire hose since you arrived, and we appreciate it. And, but I think it's made us a better employer for the community, for the employees, and I appreciate it. I think we're starting to see a lot of value in the investment that we made in making this change. So, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you for that. Any board members have any questions? Mr. Misery.
Could you give us kind of a quick overview of your nine objectives that you put in for this year?
There's a number of new policies that, when I first got here, one of the first things I did was to change, you know, the most basic things, for instance, the application in anticipation of changes in the law. There are a number of other policies relating to sexual harassment, domestic violence. I took a webinar today on pregnancy and the Pregnant Fairness Act that's going to affect Unable First. So, there'll be a series of policies that are going to be developed and put forth, both to make it a better place to work, but also to bring us into legal compliance with either laws that are going into effect or will be coming down the pike. We have a number of vacancies that have occurred. Obviously, we've been prioritizing trying to fill those vacancies, but also taking into account, filling them in a reasonable pace. In other words, not just filling the position, filling it with someone of quality that we believe will last and be a net positive. We're going to continue to work with IVG and RSI in terms of our insurance issues, whether it's, you know, staying with our current carrier or exploring other options. We obviously want to give not only the best that we can to our employees, but the best value to the taxpayers. Certainly, in terms of collective bargaining agreements, we've settled some, there's a few more to go, there's a few more to be integrated. We're waiting on some of the, our union partners in terms of that. Working with the IAC, the Insurance Advisory Committee, in terms of any changes, which inevitably, every year, it seems we're sitting down there. Some of it is retread, but I believe that the work we've put in over the last year have made it far more a cooperative body. I'd also like to acknowledge and thank the school department in terms of their cooperation. In this past year, we had the first opportunity to be invited over there and to address their employees as well. And we're all in this together, so that is an incredible step forward. And I've already talked to the superintendent about doing that again this year. I'd like to continue, we had some lag money from previously, the employee appreciation luncheon. I thought it brought together employees from different departments and from different backgrounds, a commonality of purpose, dedication to mission, and it was also a good time. I appreciated the folks that could make it to also attend, and some even won prizes. So, it's, you know, I think one of my roles, also quite frankly, I think why I got the job was also to be a resource in-house that wouldn't merely cost the town less in terms of external counsel, in terms of actually going to and answering specific questions, but being available to head things off at an earlier point. And we've had a success with that, building those relationships, and it's been very positive. So, those are the basic things. There's a number of it outlined in our operating budget statement as well.
Mrs. Minipelli.
I just wanted to echo Selectman Prisco's comments. It's been a great, your service has been a great, one of our better decisions and investments made, I think, for the town. When, I just looked at, you have one full-time, which is you, and you have one part-time. Is that 30 hours a week, the part-time is 30 hours? And the service is here, 30 hours a week here in the building?
Yes. Allison is my benefits coordinator.
Thank you, Allison.
And she's been invaluable in terms of dealing with all of the changes, both for our full-time employees, but let's not forget our retirees as well. And she's been a vital lifeline and a link between the retirees who served the town for so many years, and in terms of having contact with their, with their benefits.
And I just wanted to thank, I didn't see you back there, but thank you too, because this has been a pretty, there's been a lot of changes this year too that.
There she is.
I'm sure you've been a huge help to your colleagues working through all these changes, especially with the health insurance matter. So, that's it. That, I just had, that was my only real question.
Any other questions for HR? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is youth services. It's on page 61 in the book. I will give you the page numbers tonight. Keep everybody moving along.
Pictures are reported.
Yeah, we'll use the mic, sit down, be comfortable. You could be there for a while, so.
minimal, and the town administrator's request matches the departmental request. There have been no major changes, but I'm going to pass it over to Amy now. Thank you. First, thank Mrs. Minipelli for serving us as our liaison to the board this past year. And acknowledge, our Chair Peter Majane is here, as well as Amy DeChara, who is a newer member to the Youth Services Committee. I always try to give you a little graphic representation and a couple of highlights. So, already this year, we're at 165 students served, and that's on trend to pass our biggest year ever, which was about 201 students back in FY '16. However, with the change of staff, and as you know, a new Youth Services Director coming on, there might be a lull in the April enrollment, April vacation enrollment, so, and it might end up being just on par with last year, but we are on trend to pass our enrollment. Another highlight I just wanted to note is that we've had nine students with special needs participate in youth services this year. This is the highest we've ever had, and it can't be underestimated the value of that. Connecting with that population is the number one call I get of parents, specifically in elementary school and middle school, looking to provide their students with an opportunity to connect on a social level with their peers. And typically, they do that through our mentoring program or through middle school youth group. And I hope that number's going to grow. I certainly wouldn't be surprised if that grew, and I'm really happy that we're able to serve those. I just want to acknowledge as well that the high school students have been working very hard with that population, sometimes without any experience in that field. So, I want to recognize their patience and their dedication to working with that population. Again, this is our second year of participating or providing the reality fair for the entire junior class. Thank you, everybody in this room who participated, a lot of people on Finance Committee as well. That continues to be a premier program offered by Youth Services and something that I hope the next Youth Services Director will continue on with. As always, I give you a little update too about what's going on with Community Impact Team. So, if you'd like me to talk about that, I'm certainly happy to do that.
Board members? I think you're good.
That was easy.
Pretty, pretty simple. I mean, it's two budgets and we're minus 5%, which is good. We're going in a great direction.
I'll just let you know too, and I would like to thank everybody here as well. I graduate in nine days for my master's program, and I can't thank you enough for your support on that, and I'm happy to come back and tell you a little bit more about that. I don't want to jinx it, but I'm doing well with my grades and going into my final week, so I don't want to say anything more, but thank you for that.
Thank you. You got a comment?
Just one, one quick comment. I am a little partial to Youth Services, because Mrs. Schultz is a member as well. You guys do a lot of great things for the community, and I know, just, I don't know if it was Youth Services or not, but you just did a seminar on vaping. You know, just, you guys are kind of ahead of the curve with things that come out for parents to watch out for, and I think that's great, that the town has that resource, and I think you guys do a great job.
Thank you. That was technically through the Community Impact Team, but as we know, it's kind of a blurred line there right now, so we're happy to do that. That event was sold out, and we had great coverage from the transcript as well on that, and we were hoping to do more of those. If I may throw a little plug in as well, Parent University is coming up on the first Saturday, full Saturday, in April, on the 7th. And I would just encourage anybody to consider attending that. We'll be doing another vaping project as well as in plain sight at that event as well.
Mr. Misery.
I just want to personally thank you for all of your efforts.
Thank you.
During your tenure, and especially the work you put in to get the federal grant.
Thank you.
I think it's a great accomplishment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Same. And I'm glad that we're able, I'm glad we're keeping you here, because we need a lot more people like you here. And I also want to, I think it's one thing to put the service and the amount of hours in, but I think Amy goes home with the worries of the kids on her mind, and I think that's something that, the job isn't finished when she leaves, and it continues with her, and there's so much more to it than just the designated hour. So, I thank you for that commitment that you've had to these kids.
My pleasure. I just, I think that's typical of everybody who works here, and I would like to acknowledge, you know, there are a lot of my peers who work on the drug reduction program, on the, on the coalition as part of their jobs, you know, chief, you know, fire chief, police chief, we have other detectives that work on it. Sharon Kelleher sits on that committee, Board of Health. I mean, we have a lot of departments represented in the efforts to reduce substance abuse, so I want to thank them as well.
And we grappling with so many different issues right now in that population, and this is, this is one big chunk of our resolving some of these issues, is getting people like this to work towards the resolution. So, thank you.
Yeah, this, yes, if you got to go to the mic, if you wouldn't mind, state your name and address.
Peter Majane, Chair of the Youth Services Committee. And I just want to follow up on Mrs. Minipelli. Amy is compassionate.
Amy is compassionate, incredibly intelligent, her foresight is incredible, and as you said, she's 24/7. When she's not physically in her office or in North Reading, she still lives it, feels it, and is a testament to what a caring individual can do for the human race, and I just want to say that about Amy. It's a pleasure to work with her and work alongside her, and I'm very honored to be in this position. Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary.
Just like to echo a lot of the comments that were made, and reiterate thanks and appreciation for how the programming has developed over the last several years. I mean, it really has touched a lot of lives in a positive way, and it's having a positive impact. But, Reality Fair, I got to participate this year, was a good time. Yeah, I'm telling you, it's a great program for those kids, and it was a lot of fun, you know, for those of us that participated, in helping them realize what are they getting into and what's in front of them. It's a great exercise for them to go through, and I think they learn an awful lot from it, and it's a great program, and I agree, I hope the Youth Services Director continues the program.
I'm sure he or she will. We'll be pushing that one.
Yeah, that's a good one.
So, you could see, I've been here now, it's my, going into my ninth year soon, we put this in place a long time ago, and the leadership had a great vision when we decided to add this to our administration. And to go to school today, to live in this town, to live in any community, to me, it just seems like it's getting more difficult for young adults and children. Things that they're facing that I never faced when I was a young person, so, which tells me that we need to make sure we continue to invest in this area, in other areas related to it. And you can watch the news every night now, and you see the challenges that our youth are faced. So keep up the good work, thank you for your tireless efforts.
Thank you. My pleasure. I'm excited to help onboard the new Youth Services Director and make a seamless transition, not just for that person, but for the kids.
Yep. This data, where can it be found?
The
There's a lot of great stuff, this packet that you handed us this evening.
Oh, sure.
If somebody in this room that was interested in what you handed us, is there a location, like a website or something?
There will be. I'll be happy to post that on the website. The Community Impact Team information-specific will go on the Community Impact Team page.
I think it's worth putting up there, it's great information here, valuable education for all of us, so.
Yeah, the logic model was interesting, that was something that was required for us to graduate from National Coalition Academy. The second logic model that you see there is actually part of my coursework, so I wanted to provide that for you.
FinCom? Does anyone from FinCom have any questions for Amy? Yes, Dawn, if you don't mind, we'll pass the mic down to you.
I think you've done a great job too, and I hope your successor is as good at the job as you. My only question is in the budget, and I, it's nice to see a budget go down a bit, but I'm a little concerned that we don't have enough in there for the next director. If that number is going to go up, we ought to be, we ought to be planning for it and not, not have a surprise down the road.
So, that figure is not determined at this point in time, so when we know who the candidate is and the contract is negotiated, that figure will be updated. But at this point, we do not know that figure.
Before we have a final budget, I think?
Before we have the final budget, yes.
Okay, good, okay.
Any other questions?
I'm sad that we have a second round of interviews on Thursday, this Thursday. Thank you. Thanks.
You are cut free
Thank you.
at home. Elder Affairs, page 280.
Okay, so now we're at the other end of the spectrum, elder affairs. It's nice to see that I have more people on my side in this room than Amy has on hers right now.
I'm sorry. Before Mary starts, I just wanted to mention the difference between the town administrator's requested budget to the departmental requested budget. Mary is requesting to make her grant position of the Outreach Coordinator, which currently works 15 hours a week. She's requesting that position to go full-time. So 15 hours is paid by her grant, and she would like 20 hours to be paid by the town. However, the town administrator is recommending an increase of four hours per week for that position, so for a total of 19 hours, which makes it a non-benefited position.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Parini.
Okay, thank you. As you can see in the budget, I asked for an increase of $1,500 professional services. We have two wellness instructors or exercise instructors who haven't had an increase in their salary in 14 years, so I'm asking for an increase there. I'm also asking for an increase, or actually, new line item for elder services, and that's in training and education. That would be $1,125. I usually go to an MCO8 conference, and it's usually funded by my formula grant, but my formula grant was cut this year, so I'm looking to fund that through the town, and a small fee and increase in my dues and membership. I'm looking for increased hours in our Outreach Assistant. Presently, our Outreach Assistant, as Liz said, is paid 15 hours from a state formula grant, and I am requesting that position be made full-time for 35 hours. Our Outreach Assistant has been on staff for one and a half years now, and has made an enormous difference in the social service area in our department. As you know, our senior population, which is 60 years and older, represent close to 26% of the town's population. That's projected to grow to a close to 40% in another 10 years. Especially with the pulte residents moving into town, that growth will increase sooner than later with the projected 450 homes being built for the folks who are 55 years and older. So those are my increases. I just want to make a note. I want to note that four different departments that I know have requested either a new position or an increase in hours. The Police Department has requested funding for mental health clinicians. The Board of Health has requested an increase in hours for their public health nurse. My department has requested an increase in hours for our Outreach Assistant, and you already heard from Amy what her needs are. And the Veterans Department is in dying need of help in their department. So do you see a pattern here? There are unmet needs for these departments who deal with the most frail, vulnerable members of our community. The town has a strategic plan. We're always asking our staff and department of their goals and objectives, but I've heard this new phrase a few years ago, and it's the perfect time to use it. Do we have a humanitarian plan in place for North Reading now or in the future? So that's my request. We have a huge problem that's growing in social services in all departments. We all work together. Last month alone, we had our horrendous situation that took place with three generations. It involved police, Board of Health, my department, and DSS. We work together, but we need the expert help and more help to be able to do this. So I'm asking that you strongly consider funding these positions, or think in the future, the needs, because it's growing, the people are here, and we're going to have situations that have to be addressed.
Bob, Mr. Missary, go ahead.
Can you give us a little update on the new transportation system?
On the transportation system? It is in place, it's working.
I know that.
I don't know too many of the numbers. I do get calls. My calls are less because people must know that there is another place to call. Could there be some improvements? Absolutely. But at least we have a transportation program in place that we didn't have before, and we're able to get people to medical appointments that weren't able to get there before.
Those calls go directly to the transportation
They go directly to Mayor McValley.
Yep. I can give you a little more insight on that as well. The increase in participation is happening. One of the challenges that we're finding is that some of the further-out hospitals, like in Jamaica Plain, maybe become an issue. We're going to have to probably sit down here in the next few months and meet with MVRTA and start to look at some of the challenges they're having with some of the ones that are further out. But other than that, the participation's been good, the feedback's been good from the users, and we, I gave a budget number, which is a little more money than we had expected for FY19, so we're probably going to have to make some adjustments on the locations to try to get that number back and check. If it gets off, if I remember correctly, eight grand, nine grand, from what we were budgeting. So Mary, we need to work together with you at some point to start to make some, we may have to make some tough decisions, but the bottom line is, we're certainly providing more than we had in the past.
Yes, there isn't a program in place that we didn't have in place before, so it is helping
And it's working pretty good. What we may have to do is supplement some of the further-out locations with the van assistance that you offer already, to try to make up for any challenges that we could face with some of the budget requests. Okay?
Mr. O'Leary.
Just in relation to the outreach position, Outreach Assistant, currently is, how many hours again?
15 hours.
15 hours, and you can go to 35.
We would like to go 35, and she works a lot more than 15 hours a week.
No doubt, yeah, I'm sure. And again, the town administrator and finance director, we're looking to increase four additional hours just to keep the benefits in check?
I can speak to that. It's not just about the benefits, it's about the budget constraints.
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Chairman, so I think it's a combination of two things. No denying the need, that's for sure. Trying to find a way that we could continue to add incrementally to the services was something we put on the table, in the hopes that it would be able to be sustained through the budget process. I think we would have loved to have been able to recommend the full-time position as was requested, the 35 hours. Boosting it to the 19 hours gives us additional outreach capacity without the liability of the benefits coming onboard. We thought it would be a more achievable goal in this fiscal year. But it's no secret, you know, any number of the new initiatives we're discussing here are going to need to be considered in the context of the overall financial standing in the next few weeks.
Just in relation to the incumbent in the position, I mean, obviously not enjoying the benefits of the town offers, do we anticipate that if this incumbent were to stay, would be availing themselves of the benefits, or stay with the remaining coverage, the current coverage that she has?
I can't, I can't comment on what her intentions might be.
No, I know, but to me, again, the budgetary constraints are what they are, but that also can be a factor in increasing hours beyond the four, which would make the benefit eligible, but may not avail themselves of those benefits.
Mr. Chairman?
Even if an employee or, you know, a future employee chooses not to take the benefits, the benefit you would be speaking of is health insurance, we would still have an OPEB liability for them, and there are other benefits that are included in the benefit package, not just health insurance.
I understand.
So, you know, they would be paid time off, which is an accrued liability as well. So, you know, even if the individual chose not to take health insurance now, they have the opportunity to take it, so it is still a liability to the town.
I'm not disagreeing. Generally, from budget to budget, again, it's a fact, it should be a factor, let's put it that way.
Mrs. Minipelli.
Mary, on your, on the, your list of what you wanted, so you are looking, or ideally you'd be looking for another, it looks like another new part-time outreach, and then to make the outreach full-time, so?
It would be the same Outreach Assistant, but to get for 35 hours instead of the 15 hours that she's presently working. And, I mean, four hours is great, and at least she'll be getting paid for those four hours that she's already working.
And is it you or the Outreach Coordinator that writes for the grant?
It's a state formula grant, I write the grant.
And are either one of you in the department looking for, you know, other types of grant opportunities?
We're always looking. We don't hear anything. Obviously, in my field, we talk to other MCO8 directors, and that's usually where our information comes around. We haven't heard of any other money there.
Would it be you that would write for those grants, or the outreach?
I guess I would ask, I would be writing, maybe with the help of the outreach person, and obviously with someone with the help from many people that we have in town hall to help us.
But right now, you are the one that does that?
It's a standard state formula grant, it's standard money that everyone gets every year, and just decided how you're going to spend those monies.
Thank you.
So when I look at this, I see the difference really between FY18, which we're currently operating under, and what the town administrator recommendation is, is actually a reduction of $227 from, right? And so we're going backwards a little bit, and I'm not sure I can pinpoint exactly all the numbers, why?
Sure. So another change that took place in FY18 for the Elder Services budget has to do with the van driver. In FY17, we had one full-time van driver that was an NUE employee, and now in FY18, we have two part-time van drivers, so there was a slight reduction in the hourly rate for those individuals, so that's the difference.
Thank you.
And we're sticking with that for FY19, is to still have the part-time, the two part-time van drivers.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mrs. Parini? FinCom, you have any questions?
No. We actually discussed these budgets at our Finance Committee meeting this past week, and also talked to Town Hall about the budgets, and in some cases, talked to the department heads. So we have reviewed these.
I'm going to keep asking you, though, through the evening, if you don't mind.
You may keep asking me as much as you wish.
I don't want to make sure, I want to make sure, yeah, an opportunity on everyone. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing that caught our attention, I don't know if this is really a book read or not, but when I think of elder services or elder affairs and the building on the common, I think of not only a program that helps seniors that are having issues, but I also think of it as a place that seniors can go and have activities and do things, and meet up. And so I was a little bit concerned that the department, quote, "serves the most venerable," which I assume is vulnerable, poorest and fraillest members of the community, because that kind of shuts out a lot of seniors that might otherwise participate. So I'm not sure if that should be expanded, or if that's in fact what the objective is.
I believe Mrs. Parini had a difficult time hearing you. So maybe you could just summarize again, pretty, a little louder?
If the building on the common is supposed to be not just a center for seniors to get together and have activities, but in addition, a location for various support services, then I was a little bit concerned that when the Department of Elder Affairs, and I quote, "serves the most venerable,"
Venerable, yeah.
Okay? "poorest and fraillest members of the community." My take is that if you're an active senior, you're probably not going to show up there as a result, and I'm wondering if that objective should be expanded.
Well, we run programs. As you all know, I have a one-room senior center that also holds two offices. One is the outreach work, well, actually, it holds probably five offices, because one office, we have probably five different people using that, and I have an office, so it's very difficult to do more than one program at a time. We have offices where we do have the privacy of people coming in and talking to people in our offices, and we also provide programs five days a week, and we, most days move furniture three or four times during that day to provide those services.
I'm not, Mary, I'm not suggesting that you don't run programs, I know you do. I'm just wondering if the definition or objective of elder affairs maybe dissuades some people that aren't poor and frail? That they, do you see what I'm saying?
Yes, I do see what you're saying.
That's, I know you
I guess in my
I know you do a great job considering your limitations of space, et cetera, and personnel, and I don't question that for a minute. And, but I'm just wondering if you want to get more seniors from the community to participate, they may not want to be labeled as poorest and frailst.
Well, I guess in my position, I wear two different hats. I'm Director of the Senior Center, and I'm Director of Elder Field. So Director of Senior Center has So, the director of senior center has a different job to do. We're in the senior center, we provide programs, we're always trying to bring in younger people to our senior center to provide programs, and on the other hand, we also do social services. So, if the objectives seems unfair, maybe there should be a point where adding, not only we're trying to help our frail seniors, but we're also trying to provide services for other elders who may want more socialization, or younger elders who wanna come to more of our wellness programs, so maybe that is a misled objective there.
Any other questions from Mary, anyone? Okay. All Mr. Doherty.
Another question, just more of a comment. And I think first, there is a limitation in the facility, no doubt about it, and the department is making its, the best use possible out of the confined space that, that it has available to it, and where necessary, finds other, other space, but they've also opened the space up for multiple community uses. It's used as a meeting room for multiple different organizations off hours, and Mary has welcomed that, and then most recently, it's served, over the past few years, as a warming center for the public, when we've had power outages or other issues. So, I just wanna recognize Mary for her efforts, not only serving the elder community here in North Reading, but serving the community as a whole. So, Mary, I just wanna say thank you for your efforts.
Thank you. Any other questions? We're good? Thank you, Mary, have a good evening. All right.
You know what, excuse me, Mary, one second, Mary, just one other thing, could you just elaborate the level of services we get as a result of Mystic Valley, and the dollars of services that we get? Again, Mary happens to be president of Mystic Valley Elder Services this year too, but I think it's important for people to understand that the budget that she manages and oversees is much larger than what we're seeing here, what we appropriate.
Oh, sure, we, um.
Just a second.
Town contracts with Mystic Valley Elder Services are part of eleven community program that they are ASAP agency. Each city in town is required to work with one of these agencies in the country, not being biased in any way, but I'm very fortunate to work with Mystic Valley Elder Services. And this year, I think the figures were like, we got almost nine-hundred dollars worth of services for Mystic Valley Elder Services for a small fee of, I think, we discussed this earlier, for two-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars. So, we have services that are needed, they provide our home-delivered meals, they provide our concrete meals, they provide us services with Greater Boston Legal Services. We're very fortunate, we now have a behavioral health program when people come into the homes, home care issues. This year, because of being able to work with these folks, we kept like thirty-two, what, thirty-five North Reading residents home, in their homes, not in a nursing home, because we're able to provide services with Mystic Valley Elder Services to keep them there. So, to be honest, without this relationship with Mystic Valley Elder Services, most of the programs that we do provide would never ever happen, yeah?
And again, the role that the outreach person plays is critical.
Oh, my God, yes.
So.
Yes. So.
Thank you.
That's good, that was, that's valuable to.
It's very valuable. People don't understand, first of all, the bang we get for our bark, but in a town like North Reading, we would never, in a million years, be able to provide services the way we do to people. So, I thank them every time I see.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mary.
Town clerk, page two sixty-six.
For the benefit of laying out my material, I prefer to sit.
Please, make yourself comfortable.
Thank you. Don't mind if I do. And in an effort to save on printing costs, I did the PowerPoint, so.
Mr. Chairman, through you, this PowerPoint presentation is in the FY twenty-nineteen budget folder in Dropbox.
Thank you.
Before Barbara begins with the town clerk's FY nineteen budget, I just want to make the note that the town administrator's request for both divisions within the town clerk's department, the town administrator is not recommending the miscellaneous small capital in the elections division for six-nine-hundred dollars. That is the only difference between the departmental requested budget and the town administrator's budget.
The small what?
It's small capital, six-nine-hundred dollars, and it's for polling pads, and Barbara will, you know, talk about that a little further in her presentation.
Good, that answers my question, so, that'll answer my question. Go right ahead.
All right. So, this is just our mission statement, you know, it is the mission of our office to be a reliable provider of information and quality services to the community and its residents, and to our cooperatively and in concert with all the departments, boards, and committees, while complying with state and local statutes, and, you know, that's a daily occurrence in our office. We do work with every department, and we answer to many, many state divisions, and the majority of the things that we do in our office are governed by state laws. So, it is always under deadlines, it is always changing as the state laws change, and we change along with it to accommodate and make sure that we are all in compliance. The organization of the office consists of three full-time persons, it's myself, the assistant town clerk, and a secretary, and we have seventy-plus or more senior election staff who are on call and anxious to provide their services for every election. They are such a dedicated group, and I feel very, very fortunate to have them. They do a tremendous job, they attend the training sessions, and they take their positions very, very seriously. And together with that, to help supplement the daily efforts of the office, we have two senior program staffers who, again, are exceptionally dedicated and conscientious, and they are also on call with the ebb and flow of the work of the office, primarily during this time, when we have census that we're, we're scanning into the computer during elections. They do a tremendous amount of work to help us get organized for the election day. There's a lot of pre-work that has to go along to make the day successful, so to speak, and they are not a small part of that, they are a tremendous assistance to our office. So, we feel very fortunate to have the benefit of that program, and the benefit of these two persons who work in our office under that program. These are some of the statutory responsibilities of our office, of course, elections, voter registration, and voter activity. Some of the newest, when I reference ever-changing laws, some of the newest things that have come along under the Elections Reform Bill include, of course, as we know from the last November election, early voting. We do preregistration of sixteen and seventeen-year-olds now, and we get, daily, we get a tremendous amount of students, or young people, I should say, that register online ahead of time as part of the Election Reform Bill. They go into a queue in the stadium, and they stay there till the day they turn eighteen, in which case, then we get notified from the state system that we have X number of preregistered voters waiting to be certified. And then it goes through the regular process, just as though they were registering that day. That is, that is really taken advantage of by our sixteen and seventeen-year-olds, so I'm, I'm pleased about that, it shows the interest, they are our future, and hopefully they will vote when they turn eighteen. We have online voter registration, which really is where the bulk of our registrations come from now. That's a fairly new part of the law as well, and it really is working very, very well. Prior to that, the majority of our registrations came from voters who went to the RMB to transact some kind of business, whether it was renewing a license, or registering a car, and they would register at that venue. We do get some registrations through so, social service programs, but the online activity is tremendous, there is, and we do see an upscale in that when we hit another election coming, and we're approaching, especially when there's ads by the Secretary of State on TV about it. And some of our other concerns or, or compliances with the elections program is, have a compliance, which is the Help America Vote Act from years ago, but it has an impact on us. It mostly covers a lot of issues with overseas voters, which makes the process much more streamlined for them, as we can now transmit ballots by email with their permission, and it just helps get ballots to overseas voters very quickly and back to our office, again, where prior to that, we were reliant totally on postal services to do that, and sometimes, depending on where the voters are living, that was very problematic, and our military personnel as well. So, it really does help a lot. Another, of course, statutory responsibility is the conduct of the annual census and providing residency, and this includes not just the local census, but we also assist with the census, the federal census, every ten years, and that's, we're working towards that right now, for the federal census twenty-twenty. The culmination of that census results in redistricting, which we did experience last twenty-ten, and I believe also in two thousand, and that's just a shifting of the precinct lines, because the population of each precinct has to be within a certain percentage of the each other, and so that, you know, I anticipate that that will happen again in twenty-twenty. Our information also goes to the jury commissioner, and that's where the jury list is, is pooled from. The school department requests our information for forecasting enrollments, the veteran services for a list of veterans, council on aging for a list of seniors. So, our information feeds into a lot of different agencies and departments as well. Town meetings, of course, we know that we have to certify all the actions and appropriations. We, we are accountable to the Attorney General's Office for bylaws, the Department of Revenue for the expenditures that we make, our bond council, our town council, the auditor, and when there's legislation to be had, of course, we have to submit that to the legislators through this board, and there's many other state agencies and town departments that are looking for information from town meetings. Vital records, we record, certify, maintain, do genealogy, we create birth records for adopted children, and even home births, and believe it or not, there are still home births every now and then, even in North Reading. And licensing, marriages, dogs, business, raffles, flammables for all of the gasoline stations, we record all of those licenses. The open meeting law, of course, we monitor and try to keep everybody on the straight and narrow with their meeting notices, getting them posted to the website, and we are the Attorney General's Office Division of Open Government Liaison for that purpose. For the Ethics Commission, again, we must answer to the Ethics Commission to distribute the Conflict of Interest Law to all of you folks, and every board and committee member, and every employee, and we do our best to get that out there and make sure that people are in compliance with that, and we are also the Ethics Commission Liaison regarding the Conflict of Interest. Public records, again, this has changed greatly in the past year, public records has become more public, I guess you could say, and the opportunity for the public to acquire records from governmental bodies is being more transparent and a more fluid process without a lot of encumbrances, without a lot of charges. We are required to follow the guidelines of the Public Records Office through the Secretary of the Commonwealth, and, again, we try to distribute or educate all of our departments along that venue, so that the town doesn't incur any issues or problems along that way, and that's all, again, in an effort for transparency in, in government. We are a recording office, we have summons, complaints, filings, decisions of very many boards and committees of the town, including the zoning board of appeals, the planning commission, the conservation commission, we record cemetery deeds, and of course, we take in the minutes of all the board and committees, so that they are all located in our office when people want to view them, and we administer the oaths to all of the public officials and board and committee members.
Like the fire chief.
Like the fire chief, yes, three times. And all of you folks, which is one of our most pleasurable things to do. So, now we get into the real crux of the matter. This election, or this budget, my budget each year, is always election-driven. Last year, we had a little bit of a break, we had one election in FY eighteen, which was just the town election, which is coming up, actually, if those nomination papers get in, and this coming fiscal year, nineteen, we will have three elections. So, this is what drives our budget, you know, up and down every year. You'll see we have the September eighteenth state primary, and the November eighteenth state election, and that will include early voting, and then the May nineteenth town election. Those are the three elections in this budget. I would like to make a note that, even though I've captioned up there FY eighteen, there was one election, and FY nineteen, three, so you can kind of keep it in your mind as you go along. Adding early voting is like adding another election. There is so much expense to conducting early voting, you almost have to consider that as another full election. It runs for a full ten days anyways. We may do additional times, which we did the last time, I'm sure we will do it this time. Again, it is mandated for every state election, so every other year, for the November state election, it is a mandated event, and just as a point of information, it is our understanding that the Secretary of State also has put in, or has thought about having early voting occur for the September, I believe it's September fourth state primary. It's Tuesday immediately after Labor Day this year, due to certain religious holidays later in September, when the event would usually take place. He has indicated to us that he was looking to do five days of early voting for September, which would put it the week, last week in August, basically. It is not included in the figures for this budget, I don't think it's going to become a reality this year, that's our best information, but I kind of pointed out because there could be legislation down the road that makes early voting a requirement for all state elections and primaries, so that is something we might see in the future. As I said, it's not included in this budget, and I'm not fully seeing that it would be implemented this year. So, when you do look at this, think of that as another added election. Every time there's a November election, the early voting. It does affect both the records and elections budgets, as they do overlap between the staff and the services and the supplies. Election workers' salaries, of course, escalate because of the number of elections, the early voting now, and training. Police details, if we encounter DPW setup costs, if we have to wait until the evening to set up for any election, and the number of constable postings for the warrants. The office staff overtime is for additional elections and the early voting coverage. Advertising costs, again, is mimicked for those. Programming costs for the election equipment, printing for all census and election-related mailings, postage costs for all election-related mailings. mailings, postage costs for all election-related mailings, and supplies for town meetings and the elections increase. The miscellaneous category is printing and binding additional voting lists for the number of elections and refreshments for the election staff.
Mrs. Stansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz would like to ask a question.
Miss Stansfield, quick question. On early voting, I know this is all kind of being thrown out there, is that going to be at St. Teresa's or is that going to be at town hall?
No, that takes place here at town hall.
And then, so what would the extra cost be as far as?
It's staffed by election workers.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a full complement of staffing for, in two shifts for every day. This is how it worked two years ago. So they do morning and afternoon, separate election workers, because I don't want to burn them out. My goal last year, which worked out very well, was that the people that expressed an interest, it was totally voluntary, and they really stepped up to the plate. So many people wanted to help out that way. So we had a set of different, you know, shifts on regular days, and they would do like two days a week and do the same shift morning or afternoon, and then they duplicated that for the second week.
And is there a voting machine brought to town hall?
That is not allowed for yet.
Okay.
That's, that's.
So the vote, the actual votes would be held kind of like an absentee vote? You just?
It is. It is exactly like an absentee vote minus the application process.
So the full budgetary cost would be basically staffing?
Staffing, yes, yes, for 10 days and more, because we did a Saturday and we did one evening, two evenings last year.
We're not hauling machines back and forth.
We are not hauling machines back and forth. However, that being said, the regulate, the Clerks Association is trying to get that changed so that the ballots could be, we could have a spare machine here, which we have one available, and the ballots rather than be put in envelopes could be put and through a machine. Tabulation would not take place until Election Day, but the ballots would be run through the machine, so you just know the number of voters, which we know every day anyways. We don't know if that's going to change, but that would not affect the cost at all. It would just be more of a convenience for the people who do take part in early voting. It would streamline the process for them. But there are, you know, certain implications with that, that the Secretary of State is weighing. And just to assure everyone the security of the ballots, they are always held overnight, every night, in the vault here at town hall. So there's no, you know, ballots left out in the early voting room or in our office on a daily basis, and maybe more often than daily, twice daily, they are, we do what we have to do with the envelopes to scan them into the system to indicate who has voted, and then they go and stay in the vault.
Just one last question. The last time we had this was a presidential election, it was going to have a higher turnout. How many folks would you say early voted roughly?
It was over 3,000.
Oh, so substantial.
Oh, yeah. It was over 3,000. We had about 30%, 35% who voted.
Mrs. Minipelli?
I'm pretty sure I did. I thought it was, there was, there was a line out the door. I just wanted to see what it was like. But I also think people don't realize when, when you early vote, the staff is required to run that through the machines at the end of the, during the election day.
Yes.
So that's extra work that has to be done by the city clerk's office to get, to get those, to get those ballots into the machines.
There's a lot of work that goes on. And again, you know, it's a tremendous, tremendous effort. They have to be organized in precinct and street order. So following each day, you know, you start out by organizing the day's work, then you have to integrate it with the previous day's work so that by the time these envelopes are taken to the polls, and what we had was two teams of people who just handled these early voting ballots up on the stage at St. Teresa's in full view with bins and bins and bins, slicing open the envelopes, and then laying out the ballots and then feeding them through the machine.
And that was a really busy election, so they had to find the time to be able to access the machine in between voters, I'm sure.
It was difficult. They had to wait because we didn't want to hold up the voters that were there physically.
Early voters, we, we, we checked in on the iPad.
Correct.
And you had two iPads?
We had, we had two. We had one check in for early, that the early voting workers used in room five, the meeting room five. And we had one at our counter.
So what is this request for, is that the extra miscellaneous capital request relating to early voting?
It's, it's, we, we could possibly use a second one at early voting, but it's primarily for town meetings right now.
Okay.
Okay, because we do utilize them for town meetings. And as we get to it, if you recall, we do have four pole pads at town meetings. We only own two, and we've been able to borrow two from a vendor, our vendor that's, that we purchased the other two from. However, the vendor will be charging now for those. So it will cost us to rent two additional pole pads for town meetings going forward. So I wanted to start now by acquiring three, because one can be used by my staff then, or I could even have it when I'm on the stage taking minutes to see a running tally of how many people have checked in. They talk to each other. And so that would be helpful if you were waiting for a quorum or if you need to get a count, because we're doing a hand count or such like that.
So what's the difference between the rental of the extra ones and the purchase? What's the difference in cost?
The rentals are going to cost $250 each, okay? So if we have two town meetings a year, right now, that would be a cost of 500 for each town meeting, $1,000. And the purchase to, to get them with full capabilities, this includes a battery base, because I'm thinking ahead, we know that the regulations are in place to use these pole pads at elections. So I'm thinking of one for each precinct going in. I don't know if that's enough at this point, because we don't know the regulations. The Secretary of State still has, is working on them. I don't know if there's going to be a requirement to have them at the checkout as well or not. So we don't know what it is. So this is an incremental purchase gearing towards that type of use of the technology at the polls. But in any event, they are used for early voting and for town meetings.
Mrs. Halbert, do you have a question?
Yeah, did you, Barbara? Your team does a great job with a small number of people. But what I want, did I hear you say that you scan the census forms in?
Yes.
So I'm wondering, is there any possibility that any of that could be done on a computer the same way you can register to vote? Online?
Oh, no, not yet, not yet anyways. They do have a barcode. The barcode pulls up the head of the household on each form. So whoever's designated as the head of household. Then on the state voter system program, the ability to just scan that barcode and update every member in that household is what we do. But that is because we pull it up on the state program, which is a closed program. It's not online, okay?
Thank you.
That's one of the things that though our senior staffers assist us with tremendously. They scan all of the census forms that have no changes. And then my staff will update and then scan forms in with all the changes too that people put down there.
Thank you.
Mr. O'Leary?
Has there been any determination as far as unfunded mandates that the state would be reimbursing us for the election?
Well, for early voting, I think we've set the precedent now. The state auditor's office determined that that was an unfunded mandate. We were reimbursed, or will be soon.
Soon.
$66 plus $100 for early voting from 2016. It does not cover all our costs, because at that time, we did have the three, the two pole pads. We had a few peripherals that they would not cover. But that covered basically all of the election worker salaries, didn't cover police details that we only used when we were conducting early voting when the town hall was closed for, for regular business. So I would say that going forward, the, that has been set, it's a precedent that it's an unfunded mandate, so going forward, a lot of those fees will be reimbursed to the town again in the same manner. I anticipate it's mostly the election worker costs and the supplies that we had to buy. We bought, we purchased the tabletop voting booths for use in room five, if any of you were there, because we have to be able to provide secrecy and privacy for the voters. So we purchased those already. It would be just to, if we were adding more or if we had to replace some of those. So some of the purchases that we have made, we made a lot of signs at that time to help direct people for early voting. Those are all reusable.
So, so we get approximately $6,600 reimbursed, coming soon. And I, I know it goes into the general fund.
Mm-hmm.
But maybe if it could be reallocated out to get the tools that we need to order to facilitate, and I know the money's accounted for.
It's consideration.
So the funds that we are expected to receive from FY16 would go into refunds of a prior year, and then that revenue would turn into free cash at the end of the fiscal year. So unless you appropriated free cash, there, we could not reallocate those funds. And, you know, appropriating free cash to the operating budget is not a good practice to get involved in, especially when it's not for one-time costs.
Other than, this is an occurrence which is now going to be recurring, and expenses are going to be incurred. And we need some additional tools, which may not necessarily be a direct correlation with what we've been reimbursed for, but certainly we could be making an argument for, rather than just throwing it into the pool of free cash.
Appropriating free cash for reoccurring costs is not a good practice to.
I'm talking about one-time capital, small capital cost. That's.
We discussed that with Barbara during her budget meeting, the town administrator and myself, whether there, if there would be funds available from the IT budget in this fiscal year remaining that we could use to purchase those pads. At that time, I think we discussed that, you know, it wasn't a definite thing that you were looking into, you know, and that's still an option that we can evaluate for this fiscal year if there's remaining funds in the IT budget.
Good, just figured I'd make my pitch.
Mrs. Minipelli?
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary.
But how, are, are there going to be? How, I mean, what's the projection on that? Is there going to be a little source of funds?
As of right now, there will be a $6,900 surplus, you know, if not a little more. So that is something that we can evaluate, if that's the board's interests, or we can look to come up with the funds for FY19.
Is that in the IT's miscellaneous capital or capital itemization?
There, there's money available in the small capital budget in the IT department that is unexpended at this point, so.
Why wouldn't they just go ahead and?
It would be a discussion. It wasn't a cost that we were anticipating incurring, so it'd be a discussion between the board and the town administrator and myself to, you know, make sure that everybody was okay with that purchase.
It's nothing that I addressed with IT at all. I just put it in my budget, and we discussed it during our preliminary meeting together.
Well, I mean, I understand, people probably hold their budgets, you know, dearly and want to use it for what their mission, mission is for their own department, but that seems like a pretty good IT mission.
Mm-hmm.
Even though it's for the clerk, it's really for the entire town. But there was another question I had for you, and it was, it related to public records software. And I don't know if that made its way into any kind of capital request or?
Are you talking about a tracking program?
Or, or some sort of like a dashboard database for people when they have, because I'm sure a lot of your work involves responding to the public records as well.
Right.
And an electronic software. I think you mentioned that at one of these meetings before, you had mentioned that.
You know, I did look into it. I had gotten some quotes from like three companies that do that. They put, you know, you can have a connection on your website to these modules, and people go right there to put in their public records request. At the time, based on the number of public records requests that we seem to be getting in North Reading, I did not feel that it could justify at this time the cost for the programs. They are fairly expensive, and we are not being inundated with public records requests yet. Okay, I do add that caveat, because there are a lot of communities that have signed on and are using these programs. But you're talking about, about a, if you're going to average it $6,000 cost for the first year, and the second year going forward, I have between $5,500 and $4,200 annually.
Subscription, yeah.
Yeah, and so I don't think, Liz gets a lot of the requests for in public information. A lot of them come through me, and I send them out to the department that has to answer them. So I just don't feel that it's a justification at this time, but I have looked into it, and it's in the back burner for the future.
And I just have one more question, just, just out of curiosity. How many overseas ballots, you may not know the statistic, but how many overseas ballots do you usually process?
For a presidential, I'm going to say we might have had two years ago, I'm trying to think of my spreadsheet, how many there were on there, perhaps 40?
Oh, okay.
40 to 50. And that includes military, citizens who really don't even reside in, in the U.S. anymore have taken up residency like in Canada, but are still U.S. citizens. They can vote, as well as their family members. So what we have to do is track them, basically, through our records to make sure that at some point they did in fact live here in North Reading. It was their last domicile in Massachusetts. And then, you know, they can vote using that former address as their residency. They don't get added to the voting list, but they become Yuccava voters, uniformed and overseas citizens and voters. And so they stay in a database for that, so we don't have to research them each time, you know, once they're established. But it, it continues to grow.
Mr. Messeri?
I think that the town is going to make a major capital investment in a data management system that ties in with UNICEF, that allows searchable by the text in the documents. And it's a big investment. And, you know, when that's done then, at least locally, anybody can quickly find a document and then print it and provide it. The next step would be to get it on the town's website in a usable way. But you can't really do that until you've got a way of searching and pulling up documents. And that's something that's been put off a number of years, just due to expense and, you know, the getting a UNICEF system in place and getting it completed. And, you know, I've talked to Michael about it a number of times in the past.
Mrs. Verrick?
What Selectman Messeri is referring to is a document management system that probably in FY12 was being proposed, but was put on the back burner. Through the town administrator and the IT department, we have submitted a capital request for FY19 for a document management system. However, I'm not sure if it will, you know, make it for FY19, and if not, it would be FY20, as we have a large capital project in the, in the INET project that is, that's pressing. We do recognize that the document management system is a necessity, especially in the electronic day and age. I know that I would use it, and, you know, many other departments, as well as the citizens of the community would use it. So it is something that we are back into evaluating, all, all of our options, but, you know, I'm not sure that it will make it for FY19.
Any other question?
I would like to add that as far as the public records, we did create a website, a department called Public Records, if you go to the town website. And that has a lot of information there that's useful for town departments and committees, as well as the public. There is an online fillable PDF form that a person can use to request public documents, and it can, it would get emailed directly to me. And then I, if it's of records for our office, we will take care of that. If it's not, we forward it to the department that has the records. So that, you know, at least makes that portion of it, you know, easier for the public to, to request records.
That's good. That's good.
Anything else?
So this is a breakdown in the records budget, you know, which you have as part of my submission. I don't think there's anything new there that, I don't know if you need to go through it line item by line item. If you have any questions on any one of them, I'd be happy to answer it. Kind of breaks down the difference in the costs and likewise for the elections program.
Okay.
And again, that small capital, as you can see, is the poll pads. Definitely for town meeting check-in, definitely for early voting and elections is a question as of this point. And finally, just to put this up...
I'm sorry, before you proceed, Ms. Earl.
Yeah, concerning the poll pads. Technology seems to go, become outdated fairly quickly and state laws, while they don't change particularly quickly, change.
Yes.
So I guess my concern, and I don't question the value of them, but I guess my concern would be if you buy poll pads now, which is functionally for town meeting check-in, do you, do you have a sense that those same poll pads in, say, three years are going to be usable, programmable or able to function for early voter in state, state elections or federal elections?
At this point, it's a, it's a data collection tool, okay? It contains our voting list.
Right.
And the program is outside of the state program so that the vendor updates that. We just had a new update on it for use for this coming year. So they're the ones that will update it. It's part of the maintenance fee that we pay annually. The poll pad itself eventually would probably need to be replaced. They are iPad Air 2s right now and like you say, as technology keeps growing. I'm sure that they will accommodate their program and keep it running on these because they know each community is making an investment in that and not have to replace the actual physical poll pad, you know, frequently.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
And so finally, I just wanted to say that this is also not a small part of what we do in our office. We get, field a lot of questions from people that don't belong in our office and we give them a lot of direction or assistance, my staff and myself, and we try to find a solution for them or at least appease them in any way that we can to get them the information that they're looking for. Any other questions?
Thank you. Our informant.
Thank you.
Can we take a five-minute recess? Are you guys okay with that? Or you want to continue without me for five minutes?
Loaded questions.
I'm waiting for five minutes.
Whatever you want to do.
So we just take a five-minute recess? Okay, next. Treasurer and clerk, 84.
Treasurer, collector, Mr. Treasurer.
Sorry, collector. Can we get the lights on, Liz?
Yes, sir. Back behind your head. Just slide it up, on, you just slide it up.
Can you see my paper yet? Page 84 for the board.
84?
84.
Thank you, Michael.
Mr. Chairman, I'll do the comparative presentation since the financial director's out of the room. I believe that the departmental request and my recommendation are 100% aligned but there should not be any differences that come up during this budget hearing. I'll turn it over to the town treasurer slash collector for her review.
Good evening. We'll do the treasurer's budget first. The only two items that are in that budget are my stipend for, I'm a certified treasurer, so my stipend's in there and then my assistant treasurer collector, her annual salaries and that, the treasurer's. All my other expenses are in my collector's budget. So on my collector's budget, I only have a few items that changed from last year. I have four training. This year, UNIS is coming to Boston, that's our software company. So for FY19 budget, I'm just taking out the amount of money that I put in for FY18 for 19 because we will not be needing to go to training. And postage, just to increase in postage because of the bills that we send out and have to resend out or new bills that come in. Office supplies, we do have two computers up on the counter now for citizens to come in to make payments when taxpayers come in to make payments. So the ink and the paper on those, because we're using a lot of ink on those, the ink cartridges are very expensive. So that's what mostly the increase for the office supplies were for that. And then travel, it's just an increase to go into meetings, my staff and myself to go to annual meetings.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
Pretty good. Mr. Messeri.
Mary Ann, what do you see, the trend of interest rates, looking at the future of your...
We are, they are going up a slight, a little bit. Right now, there's a few of our banks that were anywhere between 0.85 and 1.1. So the interest rates seem to be coming up. So hopefully they'll continue to come up.
And bonding, the bonding rates are going up, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, just to interject on the interest rate and investment income. Investment income is trending above budgeted for FY18. So, I mean, that, that is a good thing. Last year, we also finished above what we budgeted for investment income. So, you know, that, that trend is, is looking well for the town. And I can let Mary Ann speak to the, the bond interest rate.
The bond interest rate is going up a little bit because with the inflation and everything, that's one of the items that will go up. Depending on how much we borrow in the long term, it depends on the interest rate that you're, you're going to receive it.
So with respect to the school project, right? We haven't got the state money and that's sometime in the future, right? We're not going to see it fiscal 2019, I think. So we're continuing to fill that gap with short-term borrowing?
That's correct. At this point in time, we, we'll probably have to evaluate it as we've rolled the bans twice. So we'll have to see what has come in for state revenue and if we are reducing the amount that we're going to borrow. That's something that we have to evaluate before the end of this fiscal year.
But we can continue to ban that money, no?
No.
So eventually we're going to have to bond it, which might be when the state gets around to providing what they owe us. That's just...
It's an evaluation.
It's a debt service, I understand that.
Yes, yes. We, you know, are limited to the amount of times that we can roll the ban, the short-term borrowing. So that's something that we have to evaluate before this fiscal year is over as where the project stands, when we anticipate the, the holdback to be received from MSBA. There's a few things that we have to evaluate.
That's something we need to pay attention to.
Obviously, the holdback's going to be a while with any litigation.
Yeah, right.
You just factor that in and...
Well, they're holding, what, 5% of everything's been approved?
That's correct.
I don't think approval's the issue, it's just...
No, it's not. The approval isn't the issue, it's the timing that really is the issue. You know, for example, the little school roof just finally got closed out and we received the, the final closeout payment. However, prior to that, we had to ban the difference of what we were waiting to receive. So now, you know, we can pay that ban off and we won't need to, you know, go long-term on that ban. But with the high school, middle school project, it's, it's a little different and we've had the ban outstanding now for two, two years, so...
And what's the ban rate costing us today, on average?
It's about 2%, could be 2 and 1/4%.
I don't know, last time it seemed to be around 2%.
Mm-hmm, yes. It's 2 and change, I believe.
So during the audit and its review this year or last year, I couldn't recall, I was reading this the other day. Wasn't there a recommendation he was making to us, something we had to invest in to help us? Just couldn't, I couldn't find my notes about something to help us improve our bond rating potential. Do you guys recall that conversation?
I do vaguely.
Vaguely, right?
It's not immediately coming to my, it's not immediately coming to my mind.
It was a major recommendation.
Okay, yes.
I don't believe that it was a management letter comment. I believe that it was in discussion with our bond rating call that we had, was it last May or April? You know, last spring, we had a bond rating call and we were discussing with our financial advisor as well, you were on the bond rating call, of how we could improve our bond rating. So there are, there are multiple ways. You know, the, the strongest one would be to increase all of our reserves, our stabilization funds and those type of things. So it, it's something that we need to work on collaboratively as a, as a group of how we want to strategize if we want to increase our bond rating.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. You good?
Just, I just wanted to make a correction. It wasn't last spring, time flies. It was actually in November that we had the bond rating call, so...
Yeah, I thought so, yeah.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I couldn't quite put my finger on exactly what we discussed, but I wanted to make sure our budget, at least if it was opportunity in the budget discussion to capture whatever the suggestions were, we did that, so that's fine. All right, and we're going to move on?
And can I just add one more thing?
Bob, I know that you ask every year about our online billing, our online scheduling payments for Unibank. Just want to let everybody know that you can now schedule online payments. We ended up doing some work with Unibank and we can now, you can now schedule your payments.
I'm aware of that now.
Okay. Just thought I'd let you know.
You might have noticed.
The only challenge of that, I see with it all is when you pay your excise tax, you have to go in every single...
I know.
At some point, we can get that fixed.
The cart.
Yeah.
We'll work on the cart.
Yeah, yeah.
That will be our next, our next mission.
Yeah. Yeah, because it's live data, they're saying, you know, that, that...
I get it. I get rocked with that extra stuff.
We'll work on that one.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Keep up the great work, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven, page 78 is the assessors.
As we begin the assessing department's budget request, I just want to note that the town administrator's request matches the departmental request for the assessing department. I'll turn it over to the assessor.
Good evening, everyone. The assessor's bus, the assessor's budget is pretty much level funded this year. The only thing that was changed, I did add $28 in there for the transcript. And if you notice on the dues and subscriptions, there is a decrease of over $3,000. That is only...
You gave up the Wall Street Journal for the transcript?
Yeah. We actually do use that a lot. So the decrease for the dues and subscriptions is only for this year. And how that came about is typically our state CAMA dues are $4,475 a year. Fast forward, we're into the CAMA conversion. So our dues collectively had enough money in there that they are only assessing 10% of our typical dues, bringing that cost down to $447 for FY19. So next year, where the conversion will be done, will be at 8710. So outside of that, nothing else changed in my budget as far as dollar-wise. I would like to add just a couple of comments on accomplishments this year. With the growth for FY18, we did have almost $100,000 more than we anticipated. How that came about, we had a change in staff in July. That change in staff brought to our office a data entry girl that she is a whiz at it. So the field work that had been done was all entered in. Some of my data, field work, actually gets lagged into the next year because we don't have time, we don't have staffing. We do get as much in as possible. Of course, all the big stuff is done. Plus, we also had Thompson, the Greens, which is 172 units that was data collected and all put in for FY18 growth. That was substantial. We picked up finished basements, we picked up decks, we picked up a lot of data, you know, just remodeled kitchens, baths, so on and so forth. So I did just want to explain that $100,000 more than what we had originally estimated. And, you know, going forward, the importance of keeping up with our field work is just that. We will gain growth from field work. And you, right now, we are right on target with our directive from the Bureau. We are picking up properties that were data collected in 2007, 2007 and '08. So we're right on target, it's every 10 years. That's not including the sale properties, the new construction in the permits. Those are in addition to the cyclical properties. So I did just want to point that out with the growth and the reasoning on that and the fact that all of our directives from the Bureau of Local Assessment has been met. We are right on target with everything. So looking forward to the 450 units with Pulte Homes. Just monitoring that, that this year will not have a big impact in our office. Next year, it, it will have more of an impact, but I think we'll be able to handle it as, as it stands right now.
When you're talking year, you're talking fiscal year or calendar year?
Fiscal year '20 will have an impact on our office. Right now for '19, it's very manageable. I monitor them once a week.
So you're saying that there'll be no Pulte revenue in fiscal '19?
No, I'm not saying that there wouldn't be any revenue or growth brought from that. We do, I didn't bring that spreadsheet of the anticipation. We will still receive the land valuation for Pulte because they have not recorded the documents for the condos. Remember, that timing was very crucial. And there is one foundation in there as well as the, I believe it, the Clubhouse Foundation is in.
Well, my understanding is that their goal was to have one unit completed by the end of the calendar year.
Correct.
And if it is complete, right... And if it is complete, right, do we get tax revenue in '19?
That, that would be taxed for FY '20. And the reason that is, we're a Chapter 653 community, so I can pick up growth up to June 30th. So if I look at just the weather conditions that we've encountered in the month of March, they're, not that it slowed them down immensely, but with just a foundation, they're not going to have that 50 units constructed by June 30th. They may have 5% or 10% done, but they're not going to have that one building at 100%.
No, I'm not sure you understood what I said. I said that they have said by the end of this calendar year, they would have one unit complete.
One building.
One building.
Which is 50 units.
Yes.
Which is 50 units.
Correct.
Therefore, we're still in fiscal 2019 until June 30th.
It will be captured for FY '20. That, that one building being complete by the end of calendar year 2018 is not captured for FY '19 tax revenue.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to.
What's captured for FY '19 tax revenue is the land value and we are estimating the treatment plant. And the figure isn't included in the revenue plan for new growth and it's approximately $90,000. So we are only anticipating for FY '19, new growth of $90,000 that is attributed to the Martins landing Polte property.
Mr. O'Leary?
Could you just explain to me how you determine the land value when we just got through paying $30 million for it, but it's not being assessed for that?
Sure.
I bet people ask me that too. I have a question too, but.
So when the land was purchased for the $32 million?
30, yeah.
That, 30. I know, I keep saying 32. Maybe that's what it should be.
I'm gonna try to give us an extra 700.
I know.
So what happens is, that is a business negotiation. The worth of that property is 32 million to Polte Homes. It's not necessarily the land value for those acres that Polte bought. And I know that it, to explain it in a different way, you can have two houses, just two houses. This house has four bedrooms, this house has four bedrooms, they're both 5,000 square feet. This house sits on a corner lot and this house sits on a corner lot, but this house sells for a million dollars and this house over here, exact same house, will sell for 800,000. It is the reason of a purchase. They, Polte Homes knows that that's a business adventure. Not that that land has a value of 32 million dollars. So, so fast forward, will that land be increasing in value for FY '19? Absolutely. Because now it has improvements on it. We will be increasing. I don't have the number.
What value do you have on it now?
We are, right now, for the exercise that we did months back, we have 5, 5.3 million and change.
Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, just a question that, what Selectman O'Leary's saying, I think you're thinking the same thing I am. The definition of what is something worth is what the buyer's willing to pay for and what a seller's willing to sell for. In this case, it's 30 million. Why are we not taxing the land at the deed price? It just sold, just recently. It seems like we're losing a lot of revenue here.
If the valuation for, if you took that number of acres and divided it by the deed price, there's, what makes that land any more valuable than edgewood?
Well, if I may interrupt, we're not, I'm not talking about once these, once it's condo-wise, you're gonna have each unit be assessed.
Absolutely.
But right now, as it sits, they paid $30 million for this parcel land. Why is it not?
As a business.
It doesn't matter what they bought it for. Why is it not taxed at $30 million?
Because there is no way that that land, as far as a certifiable price per square foot, would be certified by the Department of Revenue uniformly if I take, just take 100 low road, edgewood. That would mean that their land is worth that same price per square foot, but their rents, because I have to do three appraisals to value, the market, the cost, and the income. Their income that is produced out of edgewood would never meet that price per square foot, per that deed.
But we have a deed, we have a deed months ago that they paid this for it.
That's correct.
But if we use that philosophy, every house in town has that assessed value. If we wanted to do, we should get rid of assessed value and just do the purchase, which we don't.
The, the state of California assesses like that and the, the Department of Revenue for Massachusetts, they are looking for uniformity. When I go into a neighborhood, if I have five sales in that neighborhood, I can't assess each property for what they were purchased for. I have to take a median assessed ratio.
I understand that, but.
So this works the very same way.
I know, but go from 30 million to 5 million, that seems a little bit extreme.
That, because there's, their business model is built into the $30 million. It's worth that to Polte. Did we get a $30 million offer from anybody else?
You got 18.5, you got 14.7, you got eight.
Offers all over the place.
You got 8 billion.
I, I think what she's trying to tell you though is she can't base the assessed value on what they purchased, this undeveloped lot that requires improvement on. When it becomes improved, then the assessment's going to increase.
That's correct.
Right now, it has only potential higher assessment until it gets developed.
I want to take more time.
I don't want to take more time with this, Mr. Schultz, you can, but maybe come back to it later.
Let's move on. Mr. O'Leary, did you want to ask a question? You had your hand up, I don't want to.
Yeah, no, other than, you know, I understand the thought process behind what you're talking about, but Mr. Schultz's point too, I think it's the current assessed valuation on it from a fair market value standpoint and what its current use and zoning is, if our exceeds the $5 million, even raw land sitting right there right now. And we had a willing buyer, we have a willing buyer and they purchased it, you know, for $30 million based upon a business venture and model. But, you know, they're telling us that this, what, a $336 million project. Something, isn't that what he said the other day?
At, at 100% build-out.
At 100% build-out. I don't know that if you take 450 units and multiply it times $400,000, which is what they're gonna sell for at the, supposedly the high end, what's that get you? You know, it doesn't get you to the 336 million.
Yeah, but that, if I remember, that's 360 million, that's gonna be.
They're gonna make their money on it.
Yeah, it's gonna be spread out though. That investment is spread out over several years to recoup it, so you.
They're re-anticipating a five to six-year build-out.
No, but what, what you're getting at is that it was 34 acres, with the 30 million, it's roughly a little over $800,000 an acre. And I think that's what you're trying to say, is why are we not?
It's only gonna be assessed for half, half of what they're projecting its value to be.
We don't know yet. I think we gotta allow the assessor to, allow the buildings to be structured, do her diligence.
Conference, also, also in relation to some comments I've just made, you know, when you have, you know, four or five houses in a neighborhood, you know, going for sale, that impacts similar types of homes in that neighborhood for assessed valuation.
Correct.
Across the board.
In that price range.
That's correct.
You know, so that, you know, somebody who's been in their, their little ranch house for 43 years, you know, now has a home that they paid 12 or 16,000 for that's worth, you know, 400,000, 450,000.
Yes.
And it's based upon sales, valuation, same idea. And I think, you know, maybe we're leaving a little something on the table.
So.
I'm not complaining because we're gonna be getting some revenue from this, but are we getting enough?
Please.
I would like to add to that. So this sale that occurred in November of 2017, fast forward, January 1st is my assessment date for that deed that occurred in November.
It's been filed, right.
So that, in this conversation of why we're trying to understand why I'm not assessing that at the deed price, that deed price is going to have an effect on the commercial properties along here and possibly Main Street. So that's because it is setting a standard. Is it going to be at $800,000 an acre? No, no. I would never be able to meet any kind of ratio to get that to the Department of Revenue.
Is it an acre? Is it two acres?
I was just going by what my.
I know, but one building is gonna sit on, I don't know how many square feet it is, but say it's three acres of land, you get 50 units on it. What is those three acres worth with 50 units on it? A lot of money.
But at the end of the day, if they're, if they are selling them as a condo, then the worth, because that land becomes common area per the master deed, so that land value is actually absorbed into this now condo price. They're anticipating 645,000 a unit.
That's not what they told us publicly. They said between 300 and 400,000.
Uh, I'll.
They said it in our meeting? They said at the meeting with the governor there?
Yeah, they said the.
My guess is it's gonna be closer to 400,000, you're gonna have to buy up for, for the parking units and all the rest, but, you know.
Penthouse, you talked about being closer than.
Close to the 4.
In their booklet.
Ms. Rourke?
Yep.
Way back.
That was a percentage.
Okay, so, I mean, this, the town administrator and myself, prior to the Selectman's meeting this evening, discussed reviewing the plan that we put together when Selectman Misery was chair. This was probably over a year and a half ago, Bob, I would say, that we worked on your model and the assessor's model and, you know, came up with the projected timelines. So the town administrator and I discussed this evening to take Polte Homes' presentation of their timeline and make sure that it matches our built-out spreadsheet for the timelines of, you know, what we are anticipating for tax revenue, whether it's new growth or it is actual tax revenue. So I would stay tuned and we can come back and we can review this.
Sounds good.
But as of right now, for FY '19, we are only estimating 90,000, approximately 90,000 of new growth, and that is reflected in the revenue plan that is in Dropbox.
And that trailer that's sitting where the clubhouse is gonna be, right? That's where the value is right now.
Well, it's the, it's the land value at this point, but yes.
Maybe there is some value in being conservative in your estimates when the final valuation comes through. Hopefully it's more.
Just means it's more money.
If, if the sale prices are indicating, I, I can tell you their booklet that they had for their proposal, I went through that and I made all kinds of notes on that. That's where I got the resale prices from. And I'm looking at this spreadsheet that we went over with Bob, which I want to say was probably back in November. And in their proposal, it states the units would sell for 519 to 605. So with that being said, if that 605 is understated, they put them up, because the condo market, real estate market is an ever-changing ball that you're always trying to keep intact. So 605 may be understated this time next year. It could be 650, it could be 660, 675. If that's the case, then that's going to be the assessed valuation. So is there potential for an increase of tax revenue? Absolutely. Providing those sale prices are within that range that Polte Homes has in their, in their RFP.
But I think that we did the spreadsheet, as I recall, the tax revenue when it was completed, the number you had given me was 3.2 million.
3.2.
And they're talking 2.8 to 3. And the numbers they told us, they were gonna sell these condominiums for were far less than 6, 5 or 600,000.
That was my.
Mrs. Harvard.
That was my low bottom.
One of the missing pieces of information is that at the last couple of meetings with Polte, you are correct that they suggested roughly 300,000 for one bedroom, 1,000 square feet, approximately 400,000 for a unit of 1,500 square feet with two bedrooms. However, the parking, as I understand it, also is, has to be purchased. It's, I don't believe that.
The underground parking.
The underground parking.
The deed is, they're part of the unit.
Right.
They're not purchased.
No, they are la carte.
No, it comes, each unit comes with one spot.
That's not what they said. I think they get a spot outside. But if they want to be in the garage, they gotta pay for that separately.
It depends on how close you are to the elevator. I, I went into the ones out of Redding and that, that was the assessment.
Okay. Well, the assessor has some work. She has, she has the action. It's not gonna be built overnight. And I don't disagree that the numbers kind of don't make sense to me either, but I'm sure when it all comes together, it certainly will. Okay?
Exactly. That's, it's a business venture and it does work very differently from assessing when you're taxing it. And.
But the common area, I understand each unit will be taxed, but what about the common area? Who, who gets taxed on that?
It's absorbed into the condo values. And that's, that state statute, that's, that's not my point of it. It, it's state guidelines on how every assessor within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has to value a condo. So their common areas all become absorbed into the condo values. So these condos, say it's 1,800 square foot condo, I would have that assessed at, say, $225 a square foot, but an 1,800 square foot home, colonial, would be assessed at, say, $157,000, $157 a square foot. So the absorption is identified in that condo rate. It, it is in there.
Good. Any other questions? Thank you.
You're right.
Moving on to the most important discussion of the evening.
Oh, boy.
92 in the budgets.
92, thank you, Michael.
As we begin the Information Technologies FY '19 budget, I just want to note that the town administrator's recommended budget is the same as the departmental budget request. I'll turn it over to the IT director, Matt Cooper.
Evening, folks. I tried to pick my battles and only sort of asked for the things that were, I considered the most desperate as far as moving the town forward. Everything else, I tried to break even or do as little as possible because I'd rather exhaust those before I bother asking for more.
Very well put.
So you all have a copy of it. I could go on. Basically, if I'm doing my job really well, you don't actually see what I'm doing. So it's rather difficult to come up with a big, showy presentation of all the stuff we're doing because. we're doing because it's like making your car start in your toaster, make toast. You don't look at the circuits that go into it, you just assume it runs.
And the fact that we don't get any complaints means you're doing your job, so that's a good thing.
And I'm working on that. I'm working on getting less and less complaints. With any luck, no one will ever see any trace of me come next year.
Question I have, and you've heard it from me before, is related to backup.
Oh, yeah. Very.
When you took the job, they were still carrying tapes out of the building.
Yes, no.
Can you tell me a little bit about what you're doing now?
Gladly, yes. The back, we've actually done a significant amount of work with our, with our backup software and appliance vendor. I've done an overhaul to the system. We've done a lot of either deduplication or aggressive house cleaning of the stuff we actually need to back up to get off-site. With regards to the way that works is we now have a backup server that's carefully going out and cherry picking all the most critical stuff from all the key systems, be it Munis, be it our mail server, be it every key document and settings folders for various people's workstations, either in part or in whole, depending on their role. Once that's done, I'm actually increasing my use of a service called ShareFile. It's a holding of Citrix, where we're using a combination of, well, presently, a combination of the town's bandwidth and my bandwidth. I'm hoping to expand that in the not-too-far future to get these critical pieces of data uploaded into the cloud so that should the unthinkable happen and Town Hall's not sitting here one morning, we can push that data down onto a new set of computers and continue operations with a minor inconvenience, but everything running.
So you're taking all the essential data, putting them on a server you're calling a backup server?
Yes, yes. The backups are being run by a centralized server that's going out and playing traffic cop and coordinator for all the important stuff that needs to be pulled. Like, for example, our email system is very aggressively backed up every, golly, like 30 minutes, just to make sure if, if the unthinkable or disgruntled party decides to start wreaking havoc, we've got everything that should be there as expected. Less volatile systems are backed up a little less aggressively, but at that point, once we get those, we're only uploading, relatively speaking, smaller amounts into the cloud because we've already got that large chunk in and we're pushing in either deltas is a cute word for it, but basically the minor changes or the differences between one day or one increment to the next. I've tried, as I said before, I've tried to ask for as little as humanly possible. I have asked for a little bit more on a couple of fronts, only because they're necessary evils in order to keep everything moving forward. Asked for a little bit more on the telephone section because we're running into a little bit more cost than I originally anticipated to move us off of the old in-house system, who's coming to the end of its effective lifespan, actually came to the end of its effective lifespan, and moving to a cloud-hosted provider that will allow us far greater flexibility with regards to people's individual extensions, changing locations. If we have to set up a command center, it's a very simple process to simply up, bring, up and move your phone to any old location, whether or not it's a town building, and it will know enough to, to phone home and keep the person connected.
Have you looked into a company called Drive?
I did look into them briefly. They were very, very eager to try and do business with municipalities. I didn't see as much as I wanted to see locally. I saw a lot more activity from them on the West Coast. So I went, it didn't look awful, but I wanted to see if I could find something that had a little bit closer to home and better relationship.
Just a comment, okay? Because we've got a lot of our customers on it. And one, they've been easy to work with. Two, it's easy to program up for any particular application. And it's also extremely easy to get installed. And the cost appears to be lower than a number of other companies that we've dealt with with respect to our customer base. I'm not selling the, I'm not trying to push that on you, I'm just saying, giving you an experience we've had with a large number of customers.
Yes.
Just on note to that, it's something we can look into. We just need to be careful about the state contracts and, you know, procurement process. So it's something that we can look into.
Yeah, they're probably not on the state bid list, right?
Right. So just something that we need to, you know, be aware of, as well as working with our different, our providers, you know, the actual phone, phone service providers, so.
You would eliminate the phone service provider.
Some, some we cannot. Some of our phone lines, we cannot eliminate the phone service provider.
Public safety. Okay. Mr. Schultz.
What, the new INET conversion is going to be happening at some point in the near future. What do you suspect that'll have an impact on the budget? As far as, not for the actual hardware, but for the implementation of it?
Oh, you mean with regard, not so much the cost of the deployment of it, but the, like, the day-to-day on.
What's it going to cost for you, your department, to do your thing with it?
I don't have an extensive report. I've got anecdotal data from surrounding communities. Generally, it costs maybe $1,000 or so to fix a down pole. And that's, that's a, what you'd consider a non-priority, like a non-rush job or drop what you're doing and we'll pay extra to get to the front of the line. Those happen very few and far between. I've heard two, one or two examples of cases where there was damage to the, to the network line, and they were usually self-inflicted. For example, a good example would be construction that wasn't quite paying attention and a front-end loader dug a little too deep in the wrong spot. Poles generally don't come down short of very significant impacts.
So you're not, you're not seeing this having a big impact on your personal budget?
No. One of the benefits of the, no, no, not of the, one of the benefits of the, the model will be the fact that in the odd chance that it does happen, we'll have the resiliency to not even have to put a rush job on any of these repairs. We can wait till it's convenient and the entire network won't know the difference.
Okay.
Any other questions? Yes.
It's a loop.
Just state your name so the folks at home can hear.
Sure, Dan Pulver, Finance Committee. So I see an increase in the miscellaneous capital for hardware refresh. Is that at the individual device level?
Yes, that's for, that came about after I spent some time sort of going, going throughout the system. We're a little bit behind schedule on refreshing a lot of the computer resources that town employees need to use. Case in point, I'm actually replacing a couple of units that are close to 15 years old in the next couple of weeks.
I don't doubt that. I was just trying to understand the difference between maybe having leftover FY '18 money available now and asking for more next year, because it sounded like that earlier.
So just on a note on, on this, this request, this is not in replacement of the computer replacement plan. It's not to purchase computers for individuals. It's for the hardware and infrastructure of, of the IT server room and items like that that have been long overlooked. So this is after analysis of, you know, going through all of the systems and hardware. So this is not for personal computers, not for employees' computers. It has to do with hardware. And in regards to remaining funds from FY '18, I don't, I don't anticipate that $20,000 will, will be remaining for this increased budget request. So, and as I mentioned, the 6,900 for the polling pads, that's something that, you know, is available at this time, but we need to evaluate it as we get closer to the end of the fiscal year. So I don't anticipate a large surplus of funds remaining.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Are you enjoying you?
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, I think we're good.
You're home, you can go home and have dinner.
Thanks for your time, folks.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
All right.
Hang on in case the.
I think we're good.
All right.
Thank you.
Last two is Finance and then Accounting. Finance is on 66. I assume we're going to start with Finance?
With the Finance Department's budget, the town administrator's recommended budget is the same as the departmental request. The departmental request FY '19 change over FY '18 is driven by increasing the hours of the Assistant Finance Director from 30 hours to 35 hours. And it only includes the Finance Director's salary as well as the Assistant Finance Director's salary. All expenses are housed in the Accounting Department's budget.
Okay. No, just a quick question. So what did it increase to from, I'm just.
Yeah, but there's a, can I just ask?
Yes, please, go right ahead.
What's the, the current, the person is 30 hours a week. You have just one assistant.
Yes.
Part-time, 30 hours performed here at the building.
Yes.
And you want to increase it to 35?
Yes.
And what is the, what is the 30 hour, what's the salary 30 hours a week?
I can tell you one moment. Keep in mind, too, many of the budgets that you've seen this evening, the employees are in the NUE. So the, the salaries that are listed in the budget document are much lower than what they actually will be once that is, that contract is signed or that MOA is signed. The, you, you as the board have approved and ratified that. However, it was after the budget document was submitted. So those salaries hopefully will be adjusted prior to town meeting and those numbers will be reflected.
So they'll be, actually be higher than what's in here?
Yes, as the, those salary adjustments are carried in the salary pool.
So these numbers on this budget, that change you just referred to equates to $11,500 roughly?
I'm opening it right now. Currently, the salary is $69,286 at 30 hours. And then it's going to $80,000 and change. So, yes, it's.
That, more than that wants to.
Exactly, yes. And actually, the Finance Director's salary will be adjusted as well as my contract is waiting to be updated. It's been approved, but we just haven't executed it.
And if we don't increase the extra five hours, what's the impact?
Uh.
Because you have an open position, right?
I haven't, yes. When we get to accounting, you'll see that the accounting analyst position is vacant. So the impact of not increasing the hours, you know, if I fill my accounting analyst position, then the impact won't be as, as great. But right now, you know, I'm down a body, so the, you know, the impact would be great. I'd have to do an analysis of what the extra five hours, what duties.
Yeah, well, I'd like to see that analysis, because if we fill that position, which needs to get filled.
Yes.
Then you may be able to save yourself 15 grand right here.
Yes.
So still achieve what you need to be done.
Yes, so I would have to, you know, do an analysis of the current duties and what the increased duties would be for those five extra hours, but.
Okay. Mr. Meseary.
Can you give us an update of where we are with Munis? If there's anything out there that we need to be taking into consideration going forward?
Sure, so.
Not even next year, but, you know, the next five years.
One of the things that we want to tackle with Munis is doing the accruals, meaning the, you know, paid time off accruals within Munis. We currently have that mod, that's the payroll module, so we have that module purchased. It would just be implementing some of the HR functions as well as implementing the additional functions within the payroll module. So that is something that we hope to achieve by the end of FY '19. Other than that, for big Munis projects, there really isn't much left for us to deploy that, you know, they have out there. One of the things that we need to evaluate, not so much necessarily within Munis, but we do need to have a new permitting and licensing software for the, you know, building department as well as some other departments could take advantage of that. So Munis is one that we have looked at in the past and we're, you know, looking at different other software. So that would be another initiative combined between, you know, the new building inspector as well as the IT department and finance to make sure that everything integrates or at least has a bridge built.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the Finance budget? We can go ahead and move over to Accounting, which is on page 72.
Within the Accounting Department, the town administrator's budget recommendation is the same as the departmental budget request. And the only change within the Accounting Department is driven by a slight increase in the accounting analyst salary to $55,000. I believe for FY '18, it was 51 and change. But even at 55, you know, I'm not sure how many we will attract with that, so I'm hoping that that is enough, but you just never know. You know, I mean, it's quite low for someone that has a degree in accounting and that's what we're, we're requiring. So unless we change our requirements, you know, so we'll see what happens. But that, that's the slight increase.
Any questions?
I have a quick one.
Yes.
Did you, is that a, you said that's vacant right now? When, when did it become vacant?
I believe at the end of September.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
And is it already ad, has it been?
It is not at this point, no. It would be my hope to advertise it by the end of this month and I can cross my fingers and hope to fill it by the end of the fiscal year, but the way that we've been seeing how positions, we've been posting positions and, you know, it's hard to fill them, it really is.
But that's, that's a long time, though, to go without an analyst. How come it hasn't been posted by this point?
There have been other things that have taken priority. So I've been filling the void, which is, is fine. I did it before we had this position. This hasn't always existed, so. And, you know, other, my administrative assistant and my assistant have been, you know, helping out as well, so.
But HR is engaged, they're working with you.
Yes, so we have the job description. We need to review it and make sure that it's the same direction that we're going in with this position. Ideally, when we created this position, it was to handle a lot of the procurement. And I'm not sure if that's the same direction that we want to continue in. I'm now a certified procurement, I guess, officer, you could say, as well as the town, the town administrator is the chief procurement officer. So I'm not sure that there's value in having that position do that. It could take on some other accounting activities as well as helping with the, you know, Munis payroll conversion, which is for the accruals, as I mentioned, so.
So has HR done analysis on the salary range that's required that you see based on the current economy and the way things are in this area?
55 is the low end. So, you know, between 55 and 60. We're not asking for someone with a lot of years of experience, but we are asking for someone with a degree. But I know that even, you know, CPA firms that audit local government are having a real hard time attracting and getting good accounting folks with, with accounting degrees. They're not even asking for CPAs.
Mrs. Harper.
That's a 38-hour position.
No, that's 35 hours. It's a full-time position.
Oh, okay.
The Assistant Finance Director currently is the 30-hour position in the Finance Director budget.
Does your assistant have procurement certification?
No, she does not.
Does your assistant have CPA background?
No, she has a bachelor's degree.
Is that what you'd be looking for at a minimum in your financial analyst?
Yes, yes. We would like them to have some knowledge of it, and then, you know, we would send them to the Inspector General's classes. But like I said, I think the HR Director and the Town Administrator and myself need to review the job description and make sure that that's truly the need. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone? That completes the budget portion of the agenda for this evening. Thank you for everyone being patient. We can go back to the minutes now? And we'll just continue back to the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the February twenty-six, two thousand and eighteen regular session minutes as written.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Mrs. Menupalli?
Get back into that.
Sure, take your time, take your time.
Get back into that. It's loading.
It's because the IT guy just messed it all up.
My, my, I can't get into mine, but, thank you. Listen, minutes. My, I was gonna ask my colleagues to pass over the minutes for tonight, because I, I think the minutes, I think, I'd, I'd look to see a bit more detail in the minutes, especially given the subject matter that we talked about. And that's, that was the basis for my request to pass over. I can't see the minutes right now, but I don't know which page they're on.
So the one... You wanted to, you wanted, you were asking us to pass all, over all of them? Or just the one for the joint meeting with Andover?
Yeah, that, that's the one. I can't, they're not coming up on my, my Dropbox right now. There was executive session minutes, I think, and there was the joint meeting with the Andover, especially because, you know, this is pretty much historically, someone's not down the line, gonna be looking up a video of this. They're most likely gonna be looking at the minutes as the record of what transpired. And there was quite a bit of Q and A, back and forth. All five of us had questions, all five of us had commentary. It only looks like Mr. Prisco attended that meeting. So I think it's important for us to really have a bit more detail in that dialogue, because what happened at that meeting is informing our decision in the future for this vote. So that was my purpose in asking that we, we, to request that my colleagues pass over so we get a little bit more detail into the, into that. And I think, if I can find the executive session, I think that was the other, the other one that I was asking my colleagues to pass over.
There's only one executive session minutes for this evening, that was for February twenty-sixth.
I can't find...
So...
Oh, here we go, all right. Yeah, so the, the regular session.
Mr. Gilberto.
Sorry about that.
Can I help address the concern? The, the meeting minutes for February twenty-eighth was a meeting in which I was serving in my capacity and also taking the minutes, so...
I know.
I'm sure they were briefer than they only are. And I cannot live up to the standard established by Ms. Brooks. I just cannot do it.
I don't mean it to say it in an offensive way. I didn't mean it to come across that way at all, because Jane's amazing, so...
She is. Fortunately, we have access to videotape. So what I'm gonna suggest is perhaps we give Ms. Brooks the opportunity to take a look at the video, and maybe expand upon some of the hastily taken notes.
I don't mean to say you're not amazing, too. You're amazing as well.
We're amazing in our own right, each of us.
I think it just get, it, it needs a little bit more meat to it, because like I said, it looks like only Mr. Prisco was there, and we really all had, we really all had into input. There was much more that was provided to us by way of information from Andover, an explanation from Andover that I really think needs to be put into those minutes. But that, it's up to the board. I would, I would hope you would...
I, I think as a next step, again, I'd ask Ms. Brooks to take a look at the video from Nor Kim, that might be helpful.
We're just dealing with February twenty-sixth now.
Right.
Yeah.
So I have a motion and a second for February twenty-sixth regular session minutes, which I assume are okay?
Those are regular.
Or do you need, or do you want to take an opportunity to meet with the Town Administrator and his administration staff to go over them and redo all these?
There's no rush. I would draw my second.
Is that what you're asking, Kate?
Yeah.
Yes, if that's okay, yes.
Okay. Let's pass over, we'll pass over, and we'll, the motion's been withdrawn, and the second's been withdrawn.
How about the budget session minutes?
Also done by the amazing Gilberto. I won't make a motion.
I actually thought those were fine.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll pass over those. We're gonna move on to the next thing on the agenda.
Budget meeting.
Season license renewals.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we have public comment if we didn't take it up already, and also the change of manager.
I already did public comment.
Okay. And the change of manager for Speedway, did we take that up?
I just said we're gonna pass over it.
Correct, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was out of the moment to get that.
Not a problem. We got your back.
Thank you.
So we are, we are at seasonal license renewals.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
And I'll turn it over to you.
Mr. Chairman, we have a series of seasonal license renewals here. Robert Connors is a well-known flower vendor at the, at the Horseshoe Grill Golf Facilities Management Incorporated. This is their license to sell food out of the Pro Shop at the Hillview Golf Course, town-owned facility. Thompson Club has two licenses, as you're well aware. They were recently in front of us for a change of officer, a change of, excuse me, change of beneficial interest, and change of manager, which the board approved. These two licenses, one will run through December thirty-first for the grill. Do I have that correct? Or was it November thirtieth? What did we end up with?
The grill is through December.
So the grill is through December thirty-first, entitled to, requested as such, as was the case for last year. And then for the Pro Shop, it's through November thirtieth, intended to capture a prolonged golf season, hopefully.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the transient vendor license for the sale of flowers, Christmas trees, et cetera, to twenty-sixth Main Street for Robert Connors. Fifty-eight Wyman Street, U伯 Massachusetts, to expire December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Ms. Messeri. Any more discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the common victoire license for Golf Facilities Management Inc., DBA Hillview Snack Bar, to expire December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen, subject to all regulatory requirements.
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mrs. Menupalli. Any discussion? Are we gonna need it this year, with the snowfall and all? Just kidding, okay. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the seasonal club wine and malt beverage license for Thompson Club Inc., DBA Pro Shop, to a Midiron Job, to expire November thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second.
There you go.
Motion and a second by Mrs. Menupalli. Any more discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I move to renew the seasonal club all alcohol license for Thompson Club Inc., DBA TCC Grill, to Midiron Drive, to expire December thirty-one, two thousand and eighteen, subject to all regulatory department requirements.
Second.
Motion and a second by Mrs. Menupalli. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. That's it for the licenses. Okay, next on the agenda is a water and wastewater update. Mr. Gilberto.
Mr. Chairman, through you, two items that wish to provide an update to the board on. The first is the exchange of information between the town of Andover and its consultants, and our consultants, Ray Pierce, represented by Rob Williamson, who's here in the audience this evening. Rob, thank you for joining us, for this discussion. I'll give a quick summary, and then I'll probably ask Mr. Williamson to maybe come to that microphone there and provide a further up. Oh, that microphone actually over there is also available. So at, at our last discussion of this matter, we were told on March fifth to expect that information would be provided to our consultants by the end of that week.
Yes.
There was information that was provided by the end of business that Friday, if I recall. I'm just going from memory and the dates, and Mr. Williamson will correct me.
Correct.
That information was, elicited more questions, and also did not include some of the information that we were seeking. So a follow-up request was issued on Monday or Tuesday of the following week, which would have been last week, which I believe is in your meeting packet. There was a memorandum that was in there, pretty extensively written, to the town of Andover, forwarded to them, and responded to on Friday of this week. So this would have been after, well, Friday of last week, which would have been after your meeting packet was publicized. I had a conversation with Mr. Williamson today to try to gauge where we stood in terms of information being provided. I believe his comments, and I certainly can speak for himself, but his comments to me were that we have, we believe we've been provided everything that they have that we've asked for. Now the exercise is modeling this, and going through and determining whether we agree with the representations, and where there might be needs that we feel are, need to be looked at more closely. I'm gonna, through you, Mr. Chairman, ask Mr. Williamson if he has anything further to add to that, just to create a better picture than I've described.
Yeah, no, you've done a very good job, Michael. Again, just briefly, we hit, you know, I think we prefer some more information and more clarity, but at this point, I think we have enough to move on to, to conduct an analysis, and leave it at that.
So, first step is, we already have confirmation through a study that, in letters, I believe, in place, that confirmed there is more than enough water in the Merrimack River to provide North Reading its full demand for the next ninety-nine years, right?
Yes, sir.
And that's, that's put the bet.
Yes, sir.
That's been asked to me at least a dozen times in the last few weeks. So we just need to make sure we do a better job, inform the public that that's been confirmed, there's plenty of water, equal to, if not more than, anything that we'd define on, so the MWRA and Andover water sources are equal.
You could consider them.
Consider those equal.
Yes.
In our analysis. Okay. So the information you have now, just sort of in the back of an envelope, analysis, just give us a heading check. Are you leaning towards, is there some concern? Are you feeling good about where you are now? Can you give us something? Because the clock's ticking, and we don't have a lot of information.
In terms of what we've received?
Yes.
So a, a lot of the back and forth information we were looking for had to do with their infrastructure, so that we could tell you that, you know, they have the cap, capacity, they have the redundancy, they have the backup systems in place. Most of those questions appeared to be answered, so, you know, we'll probably be able to tell you in the affirmative that those systems have the capability all around, from the raw water to the treatment systems, to provide you. What I can't tell you yet is what the capacity of the transmission mains are from the one zone that feeds North Reading. The information that we were looking for is related to that analysis.
Okay.
So that's the information we have now that we'll be able to do. And just to step back a little bit, North Andor, oh, North Andover has a large primary zone.
You mean Andover?
I'm sorry, Andover.
Okay.
Has a large primary service zone, which feeds a smaller service zone, which ultimately feeds North Red, uh, North Reading. And it's the information in that smaller zone that we have to take a look at now.
Okay.
We're gonna do everything we can to, to conduct that analysis, and have that for you in, in a couple of weeks from, from now.
Couple of weeks.
Yep.
We meet again when?
Two weeks, April second.
April second, right.
Mr. O'Leary.
But in relation to that, if there are some infrastructure upgrades required, those costs would be borne by Andover, and I assume would be in a, any agreement we sign with them, to be done by a date certain, which is when we ask them to have the capacity to deliver to us a certain number of gallons. So, but again, I think it's important that we, what we're doing here is, is doing our due diligence on evaluating their system to ensure that they can deliver what they say they can deliver to us, and ensuring further negotiation that they, they will deliver if there's ever, capital needs, capital approvals need to be, need to be done.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Williams? Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
And, and just add, I had mentioned last time when we met, the wastewater analysis is moving forward quite well, so, you know, gonna, we're gonna be pretty comfortable about...
That's good.
Reporting on that in a couple of weeks. So, again, we'll do everything we can possibly do to, to get this water analysis done.
I think it's a lot of, you guys have done a great job on both ends, the water and the wastewater side, but the information that you presented to us informally when I met with you a few weeks ago, I think is gonna be really beneficial to this entire board, sort of make, help us make a lot of decisions going forward.
Yes, yep. And we've been working over the last couple of weeks to refine that.
Mr. Gilberto, questions? I'm sorry.
Do you have what you need from other municipalities to make your full analysis? I know that was an issue.
Um, yes, on the wastewater, yeah, it's primarily on the wastewater side that we were dealing with other entities, and we've gotten fairly good cooperation from everybody. So that, most of that information was collected a while ago, and we've just been kind of assembling and grinding away on that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we want to take an opportunity, Mr. O'Leary, now, to just talk about what is gonna take place between now and our next Board of Selectment meeting, or?
Go ahead, I'll defer to Mr. Messeri.
Oh, Mr. Gilberto?
All right, so, again...
I'm sorry, did you want to say something?
So that, the, I had said there was two pieces of information, it's actually three, but that was the second. So Mr. Messeri wants to speak to it, that's...
Go right ahead.
So toward the end of last week, I got a notice from Alex Bispoli that they had scheduled six meetings with their public, and they starting tomorrow morning at eight AM, I'm sorry, nine AM at the senior center, and then in the evening at seven PM at the library. And then on the twenty-second, at seven PM at the boss, at their conference room, the Board of Selectment Conference Room. And then on the twenty-sixth, at eight AM in the Old Town Hall. And then on the twenty-ninth, at seven PM at the Board of Selectment Conference Room. And then on four-two, at seven PM in the library. And Alex then called me this morning and asked, he said he was meeting with the Town Administrator to finish up the presentation they're gonna make to the public, their public, at each one of these meetings. And asked if I could meet with them at two PM this afternoon to review what they put together and comment, and see if any changes had to be made. I forwarded that information to Steve Veer, I think, a text, and Michael Gilberto, I talked to him. And Michael elected to come with Mark Clark, so there were three of us in this meeting. And Michael, you wanna comment from there on?
Sure. So they put together a PowerPoint presentation that I would say, in my, in my opinion, my personal opinion, did a lot of the depiction that we did here in this meeting on March fifth, but maybe more towards the standpoint of the perspective of the town of Andover. And I thought it put a lot of the information out there, including the, the differences in the build rates between Andover's ratepayers and North Reading's ratepayers, and what the differences are, even breaking it down into the different tiers. Talking about the history between the two communities, which dates back forty-four years, and as far as our records indicate, or as far as we, our practices indicated, actually more on paper, into the fifties, from what Mr. Clark was able to find. Talking about why a legislative act is actually needed for this agreement. Talking about why permanency is, you know, good for both communities. The permanency that we seek is actually to their benefit as well. They, there was some considerable discussion relative to the, the what-ifs. What happens if there's an issue relative to the volume of water that's available? And that is something that we have a template to look at in the existing intermunicipal agreement with Andover, which dates back to nineteen ninety-one, where there is water supply interruption language that talks about what takes place. Not only that, but the summary of terms that we have in place between the two communities actually contemplated it as well, and indicated that... that any reduction in service would be borne proportionally by the communities. So there is a groundwork that's there, but I do think it, it clearly is something that's going to come up for a lot of discussion in Andover during this, this information session period, and I'm sure at the town meeting, they, meaning Andover, indicated that there may be a benefit to having parallel discussions between now and their town meeting, and certainly thereafter between the two communities. There were, the town manager was going to consult with the board this evening about what structure those discussions might take, whether it be administratively, which is not my recommendation, whether it would be through representation from the boards, or whether it be through the whole board. I'm operating on the assumption that if there were to be future meetings, particularly meetings where board members were present, that it would continue to be the representation on behalf of this board and selectmen, O'Leary and Misery. But I await a, kind of, an indication back from the town manager as to what direction that they are looking to move in. But it was clear that a lot of time has gone in, just poking around on their website, they've actually put a little tool together for their residents to project their water bill, which is interesting. So there's clearly a lot of effort that's gone into this. They have a single warrant town meeting scheduled for Wednesday, April 4th. There was some media coverage relative to a citizen's petition submitted regarding the controversial development on Daskum Road, but from what I can tell, that submitted petition would be considered at their annual town meeting and not this upcoming special town meeting. So it is, as I understand it, still a one article special town meeting.
I would guess it's too late to make a change at this point, too, right?
I presume, presumably. Presumably. They, I'm sure they were opening and closing the warrant that evening that they told us, so that was two weeks ago at this point.
They had never had any intention of adding another article.
Right.
As far as the, the Daskum Road, that's up to their planning board to make a favorable recommendation in order for it to be taken action on, so it's.
But will not be at the special town.
It won't be part of the special town meeting at all.
And I'll, I'll just note the, the third thing, which is that I've been in significant discussion with Representative Jones relative to our three home petitions, which I submitted to him the day after, or two days after our board vote last March 5th, at the last meeting on March 5th. So he's been working with House Counsel relative to the language, and it's generating some interesting back and forth between myself, Representative Jones, and the House Attorney. Nothing significant to report as of yet, because they're still kind of diving into some of this, but that, that work is underway. And I, the goal was to get that work started. Mr. Chairman, maybe to Mr. Misery, I know there was discussion of working out a schedule for representation at these information sessions. Mr. Clark is not here this evening because I asked him to attend their selectmen's meeting this evening, so he is there in Andover. And I figured that most of the discussion today would be regarding Mr. Williamson's work. Mr. Clark is willing to attend meetings, he's going to go tomorrow morning, but I don't know, Mr. Misery, if you intended to work that schedule out now, or?
Yes, I think, I told Alex I would get back to him and let him know the follow-on. As it stands right now, tomorrow is covered.
Okay.
And Mark said that he's gonna join me tomorrow morning, to kind of get a sense of how things are going.
Yes.
And I'll go tomorrow evening. Again, I can handle most everything else. I'm not, so, 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 what's that, the 20th, in the evening, 'cause there's two tomorrow.
I can do the.
So I can do the.
Twenty-sixth in the morning, Steve.
Great, okay.
I can do the.
I can do the, again, I think.
Michael expressed wanting to go to one.
The 29th, I'd like to try to do the 29th if I could.
But the AM?
The PM.
At seven PM.
At seven PM.
There's, there is no 29th AM.
That's right, that's right.
It's 26th, 26th.
But, you know, you guys wanna do it, that's fine. I'm just trying to take some of the workload off.
Twenty-sixth.
You know, and again, I.
Well, I'm gonna attend that one.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no problem with more than one.
Right, as long as it's not gonna be three of us.
I'll be doing, I'll be happy to do the, the, the PM ones, for sure. Obviously, the second, we have a selectmen's meeting, so they're on their own. We'll send Mark, I guess.
Right.
Yeah, we could send Mark.
We could send Mark on that one. But I'd be happy to do the evening ones, and then, you know, the 26th and the AM, you said you could do that, that's fine.
Yeah, I'll do the, yeah, and then 4-2 will be Mark. And, Mike, you wanted to go to one?
Well, I mean, if Mr. O'Leary will be on the 29th, I will just join him on the 29th.
Sure, great.
Anyone else, but for that matter.
So you could, you could tell, I get, forward that to Alex, and then again, the chairman, Mr. Salafi, had contacted me both the same time, Mr. Vespoli contacted Bob, and again, gave me the same schedule, and assured him that we would make every attempt to have representation there. And again, from, I think, all of our vantage point, you know, my intent on being representative there is just to, first of all, ensure that the Andover public is given proper information as to the rationale for our positioning, if we're asked, as to why, and not to, not up there to advocate one way or the other, or to try and influence, but just to help inform the public to make an informed decision. So it's Andover's decision, so.
The presentation, as the draft we saw this afternoon, I think covered, I mean, it could be some, it could be some additional questions that come up, and that's why it's good to be there, 'cause then we could work with them to fix anything for the next session.
Right.
Michael, did you receive that?
I haven't received it as of this moment. Maybe something being reviewed at their board meeting.
The special town meeting is.
I brought a USB stick with me.
The cord.
And I asked for a copy.
Is it seven o'clock?
And they turned around and said, we wanna just clean it up, and we'll email it to Michael.
Okay, great. So to confirm, April 4th at seven PM?
You want me to chase that down in the morning, Michael, or?
I'm sure, if it's not, evidence has been sent, I'll, I'll let you know, but I know, I suspect they may have been reviewing it to some extent this evening.
Maybe at the meeting, yeah.
So I was just trying to confirm, the special town meeting is on April 4th at seven PM?
Yeah, I will confirm that.
Same location, last time?
Yes, as far as I know.
Yes, that's, that's what they were trying to do, is secure that location.
Very good. And now the call board members, so try their best to attend, so we can just, at least hear what's going on. And then we meet again, so we have our next meeting, well, we'll get to that at the end. Anything else on this?
Mr. Chairman, through you, so just confirming that the meeting is taking place on Wednesday, April 4th at seven o'clock PM at the Collins Center.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no other discussion, we'll let you get on.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the hard work. Review June town meeting articles.
Mr. Chairman, through you, today was the deadline for submission of articles. If you were to look in the Dropbox meeting packet, we, today, at the end of the day, scanned and uploaded a separate packet, a separate document, excuse me, called Town Meeting Warrant Draft Number One. This is a different approach than what we have taken in the past, and it's aimed at really trying to flush out the content, the content of these articles earlier in the process, rather than later in the process, so that we have ample opportunity to make changes without the pressure of doing so right before signing the warrant. I, I don't think it would be fair to ask the board members to recommend changes this evening, since we just now, we're uploading it this evening. But what I will do is review what's changed on the list from our last public review of this meeting.
Okay.
So, working off page one of the draft, number 16, appropriate funds for water distribution and supply infrastructure. This would be an article that would allow us to fund any necessary additional costs associated with the MWRA interconnection, or costs associated with construction for, in Andover, in Andover interconnection for additional supply. Number 17 would be to potentially reappropriate previously approved funding for water distribution and supply infrastructure, if necessary. I'm gonna work closely with Counsel on that, because I'm not sure that we need to even split it. We may be able to just have a single article and move to reappropriate, if it were necessary.
I was gonna ask you that question.
So all of this is dependent upon the direction we, we feel we're gonna be proceeding towards as of the time the warrant's clo- is signed, which will be the first week of May. So I, I tried to be inclusive of the, of the articles. Excuse me one second, Mr. Chairman, but Mr. Clark's asking if we should come to the meeting, and I'm gonna tell him he does not need to, if that's okay. Thank you. Thank you for understanding. So, that's why the list is so extensive here. Number 23, appropriating money for special counsel legal expenses. That relates to the town's action relative to PMA and Orin Whittier concerning the Secondary School Building Committee. And now the articles, if you're all following along, that are italicized are new, since we published the meeting packet on Thursday evening. So we have the document, the actual draft language in this packet relative to the charter amendment, relative to the naming of the positions of selectmen and the town administrator, as well as the town meeting date requirements. Article 28 would seek to make changes to our existing bylaws.
Excuse me, would, would lump all these things together in one article?
That's how they were written by Mr., by Mr. Klein, yes, Attorney Klein, excuse me. That's how they were submitted. And again, that's not to say that we couldn't seek to do something separately with them, if we so chose.
I would rather see them separate.
Okay.
Somebody may take.
Again, the moderator can separate it himself, but I don't think we should necessarily leave it to his discretion.
Mm-hmm. So if I understand the way Attorney Klein submitted these, for the, the name changes in particular, there would need to be a corresponding change to our existing bylaws as well. So for those two, they would be two articles for each, if I understand it correctly. And then we would have a, so that would be four articles, and the fifth would relate to the town meeting timing. And as it was, in conjunction with the, the town meeting action, there has historically been question about what we need for quorum, or whether quorum is required for continued session of town meeting, or of a regularly scheduled town meeting, June or October, and whether a quorum is actually required. Article 29 would seek to resolve that by indicating that if it is a regular session of a October, June or October town meeting, a quorum would not be required. The language we have right now, I believe, states if it's not on a Monday or a Thursday, it's considered a special, it's considered a, triggering the quorum requirement. There's been some ambiguity, and Counsel sought to address that.
And 31?
31 is a bylaw that the town clerk is recommending. Right now, we do not have any local licensing structure for kennels. We have received some complaints relative to facilities, and we believe that this would be an appropriate action just to at least establish a licensing mechanism for them. Again, it's being proposed by the town clerk and is on the list of draft warrant articles. And then the final new article for public discussion, this was in the packet on Thursday evening, but has not come up publicly, not unanticipated, street betterment and road paving project for the unaccepted portion of Swan Pond Road. And I've referred that to the town engineer for as best as possible his, his recommendation and opinion prior to his departure in a few short weeks.
Mr. Misery.
Do we need to put an article in regarding marijuana, just in case we have to modify what we got in there, based on final legislative execution?
Final regulation.
Final legislative, regulation, regulation.
I'm not sure what, what we need, we.
I am not either at this point.
We have the, probably the strongest restriction possible with having the town meeting and voter-approved prohibition.
Yeah.
On the sale of marijuana. Obviously, you know, there are state statutes that govern the possession and use of marijuana, which I'm not sure that we would be able to circumvent or otherwise address. I'm not sure if that's what you mean, even.
My concern has been that they come up with a way of saying to all the communities, the law that was passed said it could be sold everywhere. I may be just thinking way past.
Well, I think what it is, is I think the, maybe the legislature down the road, or some other mechanism may be in place whereby sharing of any taxes collected on the, on the product, you know, may not be shared with those communities who don't, who opt it out.
Okay.
I mean, to me, that would be the, that it's set for communities to opt in, as opposed to opt out. We've opted out for recreational.
And Andover's gonna be the center of distribution here.
Maybe they need a special town meeting to address that again.
Right. Well, they've been talking about, they were talking about doing something.
Yeah. So, no warrant article for that. Anything else for warrant articles? That's it?
That's the list at this point in time.
Only 35, and we're gonna expand it to about 38, 39, 40?
So, I've worked on a few recommended amendments to the town meeting warrant itself. I think I've sent them along to several of you, so.
What?
Haven't really heard anything about, just definition of the terms, you know, how to get into the parking lot, where people can park, where seniors can park, trying to add some of that. I've put in.
This is for what?
For the town meeting warrant.
In the text and the warrant.
We're updating the town meeting warrant.
Oh, the warrant itself.
The warrant itself.
Oh, okay.
Putting in some new.
Just general information.
Getting it cleaned up. Sent everything to the town clerks. Mrs. Rourke still is avoiding me on it. Oh, I didn't know you were still here, I'm sorry. And I have not heard back after several emails and phone calls from the moderators, so. I'm making no progress, but I've got a lot of work done.
You have done a lot of work, and you did it very quickly, too.
Yes.
What is my deadline?
You missed it.
When's the deadline for us to make it?
So, the warrant will be signed by the board on the first Monday of May, and then sent to the printer that Friday.
Right, it's on May 7th.
Well, I think, I, I think the intention is to give the board the ability to look at the modifications.
The board's got it, yeah, I want the board to look at.
I mean, they don't.
But I just wanna keep you updated that we have progress on.
So, the, the real answer is that the last opportunity for it to be reviewed is probably Monday, April 22nd.
Okay, I was gonna say April 2nd.
And the warrant, and the warrant is closed for citizen's petitions.
It closes at four o'clock PM today, yes.
I know you're good for it. Yes.
That, that means that that sidewalk one didn't make it in there.
Yes, I spoke with a representative of the group and indicated on Friday they would not be submitting one out of deference to the board's installing a placeholder article on here. And I don't wanna speak for Selectman Schultz, but we have had some initial conversation about following up with both the operations manager at DPW, and potentially the police chief as well, who may have some insight, unfortunately. We've been snowed out. We have been snowed out, yes.
What are we talking about?
The sidewalk by, sidewalk bylaw.
I think they're taking your recommendation, Mr. O'Leary, about us.
Repealing it.
If we're gonna do it, then the board should take it over, not citizen petition, I think. And we have time to try to, I think the goal should be really to get it in for October town meeting.
The clock has been working against us. We did not expect the weather we've had this March, and twice have been snowed out.
So, is to repeal it now and then have some kind of placement up on it, replace? I didn't hear that.
That's always a potential.
The snowfall is increasing for Wednesday.
I haven't heard that.
That's what I was under the impression.
Then they talk about Sunday, and I said, I'm going for.
Well, we have, we have a placeholder for it, so we can figure that out between now and then. Anything else? If not, I'd like to go on to 70 Concord Street.
So, and this may be one that we wanna continue to a future meeting for discussion. I'm not sure whether we have any additional information from DEP at this point. But we did receive a letter of interest. It's not the first inquiry we've received, but it's probably the most formal inquiry we've received. This is a property located at the corner of Concord Street and Hallberg Park. Depending upon who you ask, descript or nondescript, blue construction, industrial-style building, fenced-off site that was contaminated and, we believe, may, may be fully cleaned up, or certainly, some amount of effort has gone into it. Significant amount of funds owed to the town in taxes, but concern about foreclosing the owed taxes and taking, becoming a responsible party in the chain of accountability for the site. So, I thought it was appropriate to put it out there that we've gotten, that we've received this letter, that there is interest. I think whatever it is we end up doing, we're likely in a situation where we need to be opening it up to some level of competition for interested parties, but there clearly is a level of interest that's out there. And I don't know if you have anything further to add, Mr. Chairman?
No, I, I think we should do whatever we can to, to our due diligence to find out what it takes to get it cleaned up and back on the tax rolls.
Mm-hmm.
Actually getting some.
Just, you know, what would the mechanism be to, for us to forget? I don't, what is the dollar amount up to right now?
So, it's up to about $700,000, if you take principal and interest.
So I have the action to contact DEP, which I plan to do tomorrow, to try to get some insight what their lien is on the property, since they cleaned it and put all the money up front. I've heard rumors of being around a million dollars, and we have about $700,000 in back taxes, so 1.7 million right there. taxes, so 1.7 million right there for the property, so.
It's not worth it.
Exactly. So I got to try to have a discussion with DEP to see if they have any willingness to, what they're looking for, and then I guess we have to make a business decision if we want.
But the thing is, we can't, if we take it, Kate, maybe you know better than I, if we take it, it was my understanding that we can't sell it for any less than what's owed on it.
So I can speak to that, Mr. Chairman, and I don't know that you were on the brief conference call we had with Attorney Capola, but the way Attorney Capola explained it to me, we, you could go through the avenue of auctioning it off, where it would go to the, you know, basically the highest bidder for the property, but we would need to insert ourselves into that chain of responsibility for cleanup of the site, which I don't think anyone's prepared to recommend at this point in time. There's a secondary option, which I'm sure Miss Manu Pelley is familiar with, which, in which you can convey the interest in the lien without taking possession of the property, but you must do so for the amount owed to the town, which is, again, that big number of $700,000, exclusive of any costs associated by the DEP. So that one also poses a challenge for us. I will tell you that when I talked to Attorney Capola, I indicated to him that, you know, we got a lot of benefit in the Berry property when we brought on Weston Sampson to help us with the environmental aspect and the environmental condition of the Berry property. Would they, we recommend that we try to pursue a similar thing, where we bring some outside expertise to help us evaluate the risk a little more closely. And he, he actually thought that that would be very helpful for us in terms of the environmental end of it. It was an initial conversation, I haven't reached out to any vendors, about providing us that service, but I think it's something given, not just the risk, but really, I think, the desire we all share to see the property returned, restored to some useful purpose. It may be worth our while to pursue, it may even be worth our while to pursue as soon as this June town meeting, so.
Thank you. Moving right along, Arthur Kenny Field Restroom concession stand project update and vote to approve the payment requisition.
Shall I? Mr. Chairman.
It was going to be delivered.
But do you want to provide?
No, go ahead, Joe.
So, Mr. Chairman, through you, I'll get to the housekeeping end of it. We have a payment requisition number six for the contractor for construction of the modular building. This includes much of the remaining actual cost of assembly of the building at the site in Connecticut. Does not include the HVAC charges, because that work is not, was not completed as of the submission of this requisition. That's probably the most significant thing, on the actual building of the modular unit that's not recommended to be paid here. You'll see here, there's a secondary piece, and this is for designer services. So we are nearing the end of our obligation financially for designer services, and right now we have a projected, you know, we're projected to fall right within the budget by about $5,000 for this project, which certainly is good considering the change orders that we had to deal with in order to both achieve operational efficiency and ensure the site was restored to the proper condition, given some unforeseen things that came up, at least unforeseen in the architect's eyes. So the secondary piece of this is, we will, with the payment of this current pending bill for our designer services, have exhausted the designer services appropriations, which totaled $100,000. After the payment of this, $178.35 out of the construction appropriation, I believe the remaining balance we have is somewhere around $1,200 that will be owed. If I'm incorrect, it's on the listing of the balance owed. It's not the full amount, because they actually quoted us for some additional meetings that we hope and don't believe we're going to need, but we expect that we're going to be right there with about $5,000 of wiggle room. High level of confidence that there won't be unforeseen things at this point of the project, because it is a prefabricated building, but we'll know more tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock, when the first two pieces are delivered, and we'll know even further at 1:00, when the third large oversights piece is delivered. So for those who are interested about that time, we're told it to be delivered, it should be a pretty significant public works operation in terms of moving the equipment off the trucks and onto the site. So we're beyond, and just, you know, for the record, we wanted to have all of the construction done so that the spring season would kick off today with that facility being open. Mother Nature delayed that, but Mother Nature also delayed the spring athletic season, and talking to the superintendent of schools, I do not believe he's concerned by the impact at this point, because they're just not using the facility right now, so.
Okay. Anything else? If not, we'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment requisition number six, in the amount of $40,759.04 to Construction Dynamics, Inc.
Second.
Motion is second by Mr. O'Leary. Any more discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment in the amount of $178.35 for the Arthur Kenny Field construction appropriation for payment of a portion of invoice number 27697 to CBI Consulting LLC.
Second.
Motion is second by Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Anything else? Appointments, reapportments, Board of Registers, and Cable Advisory Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Gloria Mastrow as member of the Board of Registers for a term to expire on April 1, 2021.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Just the Democratic Town Committee made the recommendation, unanimous recommendation, to this board and to the town clerk to appoint Mrs. Mastrow.
Great.
As the Democratic representative on the board.
Okay. Any more discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Cable Advisory Committee, Mr. Chairman, I move the place of nomination to the following name for appointment to the Cable Advisory Committee for an indefinite term, John Novosaki.
Second.
Motion is second by Mr. O'Leary. Any discussion?
Chairman of the Cable Advisory Committee recommends, and so do we.
They could use some help.
They could use some help.
Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous. Detail Constable, Mr. Gilberto.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'll just read a brief statement relative to this matter, and we have a motion for consideration by the board in the meeting packet. In an effort to update and modernize some of the town's job titles, the special constable appointments that were recently made are being rescinded so that the town administrator can consider the same individuals for reserve police officer appointments, which are more common, commonly recognized job titles that are expressly identified under the law. Additionally, as a result of the special legislation that was passed, rescinding civil service from the town's police officers, the appointment of reserve police officers is now a less complicated and more constructive process.
I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to rescind the following votes appointing detailed constables, December 18, 2017, Jerry Berg, and on February 12, 2018, James McCormick.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Misery. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, to be clear, these individuals will be forthwith appointed to the position of reserve police officer, performing those duties.
Thank you. Brings us to the town administrator report.
Mr. Chairman, I was going to offer a lengthy comment relative to the work of multiple departments, but I'll instead refer anyone who's watching to Thursday's edition of the North Reading transcript. We had great work by a number of town departments to ensure that we addressed the significant damage from trees in the storm the first week of March, and then preparing for and responding to the storm in the second week of March, so I just refer folks to those items. Second thing is just a quick update to the board and the community relative to the status of some significant positions that was going to be seen turnover in. We have a field of candidates for the position of town engineer that we are in the process of reviewing. We similarly have a field of candidates for the building, the position of building inspector as well, that we're reviewing. We've gone through the process with regard to the position of public works director, and while we had, we had qualified candidates, we did not necessarily identify the desired candidate. So it is our intention to re-advertise the position. We'll be re-advertising the position in the same place as we advertised it initially, which is the Massachusetts Municipal Association website and the American Public Works Association's job website. We'll include the approved fiscal year 18 salary at $118,000. However, we will also indicate that the, that the salary is negotiable depending upon qualifications, and I expect the turnaround time will be at least a two-week period of posting. And we've contacted each of the candidates, there may be candidate, or candidates that remain in consideration throughout this process, but we do feel the need to re-advertise. I believe that that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Mrs. Manu Pelley, would you like to kick us off tonight?
Sure. Just a great comedy event for the PTO at the little school. Representative Jones stopped by there, too, so it was a funny, fun night, and I just want to say good job to Jen Vant and Linda Emmerich. That's about it for now.
Mr. Schultz.
Again, I want to thank the governor for coming to town last week, and also want to give a shout out to the DPWs to kind of echo Mr. Gilberto's comments, and I was very encouraged to see the number of plaudits on social media, people happy with their town government was working. We don't always hear that, and that was a 24-hour storm, and they did a great job staying ahead of that, and I'm sure there were some real tired people at the end of that storm, but did a real nice job moving the snow. I noticed when you drove from Haverhill Street down into Reading, you noticed a big difference when you went across the town line. I'll leave it at that.
Mr. Misery.
Ditto on the comments regarding that DPW. I think that they've been under a lot of stress as a result of what's been going on in the weather, and, you know, the streets were cleared pretty quick, and, well, you know, during that storm, it took all day, there were adequate repasses, so at least my street weren't bogged down. Stuff that you wanted to get out, I had to get out. I do have a question for the town administration, gunning the snow-revenue budget, are we getting close to being jeopardy or overrunning even the reserve money that we need to pay?
Yes, we were, we were very well positioned, even, I think, at the last board meeting, honestly, come to think of it, March 5th. And today, without all of the costs from last week's storm tallied, we are at about $25,000 remaining in that reserve, carried in the fiscal year 19 budget, that reserve that we increased in fiscal year 19, actually, so.
So we have two approaches. One is use free cash if there's anything left, and two is roll it into next year.
That's correct. Further roll it into next year.
Further roll it into next year.
So that's correct, yes, so.
Is there any possibility of getting some state aid?
So the chairman and I had a conversation this evening about that, and I had hoped to be able to catch Senator Tar and Representative Jones, but they were tied up with the resident on the way out to speak with them, so I'll reach out to Representative Jones tomorrow. I think our best bet and most optimistic scenario would be if all of these events are considered a single event, kind of similar, for those board members who may not be aware, to the 2015 storms that we had, just back-to-back storm, back-to-back-to-back storms. So that would probably be our most, our best chance, but.
I was thinking that we'd get nothing because of the impact of these storms on some other communities that really get beaten up.
I think.
And if you want to draw a comparison, that we escaped, right?
No disagreement that there were communities that sustained, you know, the significant amount of coastal erosion and related flooding damage. Some communities received the tree damage and the coastal damage as well. Again, I don't have a crystal ball, and, you know, the standards are high and the federal resources are dwindling by the year, but I think, I would envision that our best scenario would be that the state attempts to convey that these events in their totality, the proximity they had to each other represent something different. Again, that's very similar to what happened in 2015.
That's all I have.
Thank you for asking the question, because I meant to actually highlight that in my report, so.
Mr. O'Leary.
Again, the Department of Public Works, our public safety people, they did a terrific job during the storm, so I won't reiterate much more on that. But again, terrific job. Just in relation to the storms, though, and I know the DPW, town hall put out a notice that people can bring the brush to the DPW yard, I think, for the next three weekends or something. I don't think the timeline is long enough in light of the storms, you know, I think we should at least provide till the end of April, those weekends, have people available to, have the yard open on the weekend, so at least Saturdays for.
So the, to answer that, the timing was something we discussed the Friday after the significant.
Correct, the first storm.
Just after the first storm, before there was 23 inches of snow on the ground. So it's something we can revisit, not something that I am prepared to commit to right now, but the timeline was initially identified based on, you know, the feeling that the snow would melt, and people would have the opportunity to clean up. They clearly have not had that now.
No, and I think what you've got, too, is you've got, you know, you've got Easter weekend coming up, you've got a few other things that are interfering with people's ability to take the time to clean up their yards, and so I just think the end of April is, it happens to coincide with the burn season, too, where people can actually burn the brush, you know, until the last day of April, but.
I'll talk with the operations manager.
I think we should, should start doing that. Additionally, again, great meeting with Secretary Ash the other day. He's a terrific fellow, but a terrific resource and supporter of all of our endeavors up to this point, and, again, I think it was very productive. Very productive meeting, and it was great for him to take the time out of his busy schedule to meet with members of the board and Economic Development Committee. I think he, again, has a lot of good insight, and he's a great resource. And again, thanks to the governor for taking time out of his schedule to come here and present us with $3.7 million, but it was really only $3 million bucks, but that's great.
We'll take it.
We'll take it, all right? You know, I'm not going to be too upset with, but. But it could, it could get the secret to legislative delegation, they did a great job, so that's all, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, it was, it's fortunate that we have been able to capture the interest of our senior leadership in the state that want to come here to North Reading, and I think that just represents all the hard work that we're doing as a community and as leaders of the community, so we should be proud of ourselves, and that's a wonderful thing. I wanted to just mention, I drafted up the annual report. I did send it over to you. Did you happen to have a chance to look at it, and if not?
I haven't yet, but I should be able to tomorrow.
Oh, probably. Could you just let Karen know that I didn't forget about her?
Sure.
Okay. And then TA review, board members, I hope, received my email. I've already received back Mr. Misery's and Mr. Schultz's, and mine's completed, and I'm just waiting on.
So it's just a question, who's going to be more delinquent, you all right? I tell you, I wouldn't put a bet on it. I don't know.
I'm supposed to be helping lose with the warrant stuff.
I know everyone's busy.
Michael, it's the job of the chairman to get those reviews done.
No problem. So what I'm going to do, incentivize you, when the assessor was here, I'm going to have a discount your taxes if you get it in to me before the 30th, all right? So please try your best, if you can get it to me before the 30th, but the 30th of this month is the deadline. And let's see, the snow in, that we have coming, 10 more inches.
Is that what it is? Keeps going up.
Yeah, it's going up.
It's going up by the hours.
It's supposed to be coming into Wednesday into Thursday, I do believe.
Wednesday afternoon, overnight, stopping Thursday morning.
I am going to be away, so I won't be able to help you as much as I was able to with the communication.
I thought you were going to over shovel my walk or something.
He's running out of time.
Mr. Schultz is very, very good with communicating on the North Reading community connection.
You did a great job last storm, putting those updates out.
I think if he doesn't mind taking over for me, that would be good, because I think it's helpful.
Yes.
And I think next year, as we go into the snow season, if we can create a website, or not a website, a Facebook page, that we can feed this information out, or try to find someone.
We've spoken about that, we got to get that going.
Yes, and I did speak with the police chief with regard to, to, an avenue to do this, and he actually thought that the idea of at least mobilizing something for use in the storm responses.
Yeah.
Something he actually felt that could run off of the police department's webpage, and that would be just a matter of notifying people to follow it and know that the information is there, because the public safety officials are all at the table now for these larger events.
But there, there is a large number of people on Facebook.
That community connection is a big reason. That community connection is a big reach.
Connect the good.
It's a good resource. If we could just feed them the information, and I made a recommendation, build on a Facebook page for emergency and storm management.
While you're hiding in a warmer climate.
Yeah. I'm hoping to get there. I had just moved my flight from Thursday to Wednesday, and now I'm worried my Wednesday may get canceled, so. Question on the, yes?
Uh, the way the transcript would tie into that as well, because any time we would get, well, some updates, the guy who does our website would post it on our, our Facebook as well.
We can do that. I, I could, I can, um, we can feed that to yours.
Yeah.
What we can do is when we put it out.
Yeah, we'll figure out how to, how to, how to build that relationship up.
Yeah, it's, it's easy, you know how to do it.
I can send it to you through Facebook Messenger.
He can, yeah. We'll get it. You'll get it. The storm, okay?
All right.
And, let's see, the sn, the trees alongside the road. I know you guys did a great job getting as many out as you could before, uh, the last storm. There's still some left. Is the plan to allow, is there gonna be another run around town to pick up those that are kind of a budding on city?
It's narrowed some of the roads because the plows went around the trees.
So, that's my question is.
So, we, we've been impeded by the snowfall on Tuesday and Wednesday of last week and covering a, a lot of the debris. The snowfall melted back, even though it's been below freezing for a good chunk of the time. The, uh, there has been some meltback that's taken place. We've not revisited the timing, but our, our desired cleanup timeline was significantly altered. The one thing I'll stress is, will, we, if and when we resume the cleanup operation, it will be for the street trees that have fallen. What I, what, what can frustrate the process is the migration of things from the back of the house, the backyard to the, to the front yard, and the volume becomes one that we're not able to move in a, in a timely, um, timely fashion, so. We wanna get it cleaned up as quickly as possible as well, um, because we wanna make sure that we're, that we're, the roads are passable. But that, our cleanup was delayed, no doubt about it.
Um, I just wanted the public to hear that. And then, trash. Very good communication, I think, using the code red to get the word out was very important. And I think it's good that we recognize that we have a challenge here in North Reading with our trash. We shouldn't hide from it. I'm sure every one of these members of, we some, receive some kinda constructive criticism and cry to watch trash, but.
Sometimes not constructive.
Uh, we, we need to stay the course. We're trying to find a future resolution, so. I hope we can, I know we got a lot going on with water and wastewater, but, and we're without a DPW director, so hopefully the public will be a little understanding, but we also need to continue to keep the pressure up.
This is up to, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
So, Mr. Clark has put together a request for proposals with regard to that, and I wanna, you know, recognize that, you know, in addition to all of his other responsibilities. Um, he did, uh, have the ability to do that, that I know he has shopped around. I need to check with him as to the status of that shopping around for, uh, when the responses are due. But, um, that is still moving, fortunately. And he did that with the help of Mr. McGrath, too. I know they met two weeks ago, I think, um, to come up with, uh, the parameters.
Excellent. Well, good. I don't have anything else, so.
Uh, just a note on trash, public service announcement, for those who haven't already brought it curbside. Again, some trash was not picked up. Some folks elected to leave at curbside between last Tuesday or Wednesday. And now, um, there has been a, um, JRM has committed to a relaxing of the collection limitation requirement in the communities that have it, um, so for tomorrow, we don't foresee there will be an issue in terms of stuff getting collected, trash getting collected. Where there may be an issue is the time it takes to collect it if the volume is substantial and, uh, so. We don't, again, if, if that becomes an issue, we will address it, you know, through appropriate communication methods. We asked the public not to proceed into basement cleanout mode, if they could, with regard to that. But, um, there will be, um, we, we do expect that everything will be collected tomorrow.
And I have one last thing, is the wine social. The social gathering of the year is March twenty-third at the Hillview.
Hillview, this Friday night.
Yes, next Friday night.
Yes, Friday night.
So, tickets are on sale at the parking rec office. So, please try your best to make it, and if you can't and you wanna contribute, you're also taking donations. And if there isn't anything else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.